Good evening, everyone. The time being 7:00 PM and there being a quorum in excess of 100 registered voters, I now call Oxford's annual town meeting to order. My name is Russell Rowe and I have the honor of being your town moderator. First, please note that the town clerk is in receipt of the return of the posting of the warrant by the constable. Next, I would like to invite our fire chief to say a few words about safety. Chief McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to remind the participants tonight, note of safety, that in case of a fire or emergency in which the building needs to be evacuated, the evacuation routes are located in the rear of the auditorium, which is the way most of you have entered, as well as on both sides at the front of the stage of the auditorium. Please check to see if anybody near you needs assistance, especially if they are disabled, and just make your way towards the closest exit rather than the one you came in. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief McDonald. Now, please rise if you are able. Ladies and gentlemen, with hats in hands and hands over hearts, please stand for the playing of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. our veterans by asking them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we honor Peter Boing. Peter?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, a moment of silence to honor the memory of all town residents and employees who have passed away since our previous town meeting, with special thanks to those who volunteered their time to make Oxford a better community, including James Rosenquist, Alice Sad, Joanne Walker, Yvonne Matherin, Sally Johnson, Kelly Kimble, Raymond Frazier, Hazel Proudy, Kathleen Reardon, Robert White Jr., Ida Frenier, Suzanne Moran, Donald Germain, Jesse Neal, Stephen Wondry, Ann Hansen, Edward Skebos, Mary Graham, Judith Voskit, Bruce Walker, Dorothy Masterson, Emily Pelleran, Judith Moscaffian, Rita Heapswood, Frances Book, Catherine Boyle, Helen Austin, Barbara Guske, Antonio Amador Jr., Mary LaJoy, Irene Hull, Barbara Lamouton, Angela Palermo, Maureen Bolduc, Tracy Calderwood, Yvonne Latuga, Jean Lugi, Louise Budaluit Orsiarni, Richard Vincent, Christine Zorn, Paula Adams, and Peta Di Piery. Thank you very much. Thank you for your attention. You may be seated. Next is the introduction of officials and boards. As I point out your position, could you please stand so people know where you are located? First, our town council to my left, next, our town clerk and assistant town clerk, our town manager and assistant town manager, our finance director, our treasurer-collector and assistant treasurer-collector, our town assessor, our director of planning and economic development, our DPW director, our police chief, our fire chief, our board of selectmen, our select board. To my right is the Oxford School Committee and superintendent of schools, and we also have Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School Committee members, better known as Bay Path, and their superintendent. In front of me is our planning board, and to my left is our finance committee. The finance committee is appointed by the town moderator and is especially important at town meeting because they represent you, the residents and voters of Oxford. They are your eyes and ears. Each and every article presented tonight is debated in advance of town meeting, and the finance committee will give their recommendation before each vote. Next is parliamentary procedure. The town of Oxford uses town meeting time as their official handbook of parliamentary law. A copy is available at the Oxford Free Public Library. The Town Meeting Warrant Book, which is the green book that you picked up on your way into the auditorium, was distributed tonight, and it includes an excellent resource at the beginning entitled "About Town Meeting." Please reference pages one and two for a better understanding of our town meeting procedures, and page three for an explanation of the terminology we use. One term I would like to highlight is number seven, "Point of Order." I always do my best to conduct meetings that are legal and fair. However, I am human and I do make mistakes. If you believe I have made an error, there is no reason to get upset or angry. Simply call out "point of order," and we will make things right. Many towns have lists of rules that are pages long. I like to keep things simple. I believe strongly in a person's First Amendment right to free speech; however, I believe equally in mutual respect and civility. Personal attacks are not permitted and are often counterproductive. Please make your case for or against the article or idea at hand, not a particular person or group. We all came in as neighbors. Let's be respectful and leave as friends, even if we have to agree to disagree. Town meeting is the purest form of democracy. You, the voters, are the legislature. After hearing discussion, both pro and con, it is up to you to decide what is best for you, your family, and your community. This is best accomplished by keeping an open mind and sharing your thoughts and concerns with everyone by being recognized by the moderator to speak, then using the microphone up front so that everyone can hear you. Please remember to start by clearly announcing your name and street address for the town clerk's records. If you are planning to speak on an article, please come forward to save time. You can sit in the front seats that are open. After speaking, please be seated while your question is being answered. If you have a follow-up question, please ask to be recognized again. If you are offering an amendment to an article, it must be in writing, and the town clerk will gladly provide you with an amendment worksheet to guide you. You cannot move the question to cut off debate if you were the previous speaker, and the moderator always has the right to decide if opposing views have had equal time. Now, please silence any electronic devices you may have. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to waive the reading of the warrant in its entirety.
I move to waive the reading of the warrant in its entirety.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. Oh, no, don't say aye. Hold up your cards, your green cards. Old habits die hard. All those opposed, please hold up your cards. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, next is Article One. Article One is to hear the reports of any town officers or committees, and I am not aware of any in advance. Do we have any reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to Article Two to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money to pay unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year or act thereon.
I move that Article Two is passed over.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to pass over Article Two. Just so you know, we always put this on the warrant just in case any bills came up. As of this evening, I was not aware of any, so we don't need Article Two. So, all those in favor of passing over Article Two, please raise your cards. Opposed to? And Article Two passes unanimously. Article Three. Article Three is a housekeeping article. It's to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money to meet the state's share of the cost of town roadway maintenance and repair, such amount to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as state highway aid, fiscal year 2023, Chapter 90, apportionment, or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
I move that the sum of $501,458 be appropriated from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Highway Aid, Fiscal Year 2023, Chapter 90, apportionment, account to meet the state's share of the cost of the town road maintenance and repair, such amount to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Article Three has a motion and a second. Recommendation of the finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
The finance committee does recommend. Any questions or comments on Article Three? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article Three, please raise your cards. Thank you. Anyone opposed? Article, oop, I see one. Article Three passes. This is also a housekeeping article. Article Four, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, to establish the fiscal year 2023 spending limits for the following revolving funds established in the Oxford General Bylaws, Chapter 73, revolving funds as follows. Wiring inspector fees, $50,000. Plumbing inspector fees, $25,000. Gas inspector fees, $20,000. Building inspector fees, $70,000. Sealer of weights and measures, $10,000. Utilities, $400,000. Animal control, $50,000. Board of Health, $60,000. Or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
I move that Article Four be adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
The finance committee does recommend Article Four. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article Four, please raise your cards. Thank you very much. All those opposed, please raise your cards. All right, Article Four passes unanimously. Article Five. To see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money to the compensated absence fund or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
I move that the sum of $50,000 be transferred from free cash to be appropriated to compensated absence fund for fiscal year 2023.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee does recommend.
The finance committee does recommend Article Five. Any questions or comments? I'm going to ask Ms. McKenna. By the way, Article Five has no effect on the tax rate.
Hi, Katie McKenna, Finance Director. This is a fund, it's a reserve fund where we hold some money as appropriated for folks when they retire. Some of them would have vacation time that we have to pay out by law. There are some that would have a portion of sick time as well, so that's what that's for.
All right, any other questions or comments on Article Five? Can't hear me, or you can't hear Katie? Okay, we'll have her repeat it.
So, the fund is for paying out sick time and...
Vacation.
Vacation time when somebody retires or leaves from employment. It's a housekeeping item.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article Five, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Article Five passes unanimously. Article Six. By the way, you can refer to page 32 in the green booklet for Article Six. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money to the stabilization fund for fiscal year 2023 or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
I move that the sum of $250,000 be transferred from free cash to be appropriated to the stabilization fund for fiscal year 2023.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee does recommend.
The finance committee does recommend, and I am told that there is no effect on the tax rate for Article Six. Any questions or comments on Article Six? Yep, come on down the front so you can use the mic. All right. Dr. Hallam, you're going to have to come up in the front so they can see.
Yeah, more. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. He just wants to know how much is in the fund.
This should work, right? Can you hear me now? Okay, Katie McKenna, in case you didn't hear me back there before. Currently, the stabilization balance is $1,713,425,099.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Article Six? I'm not familiar with a question of privilege.
It's from Demeters. It has to do with issues...
Yeah, we don't use Demeters.
...the space. Well, it's something that's not in town meeting, so it's Demeters, and then it's town meeting for things that, for other things that are in town meeting time.
All right. First of all, you need to identify yourself in your...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Robert King, 59, Quobog Avenue. So, we have town meeting time, but then town meeting time is on top of Demeters.
No.
Just, what are you trying to do, and I can help you. Yeah, it's just a question of privilege. It's, it was just to ask if we could have someone move the microphone for people who are unable to actually approach the microphone.
Yeah, okay, that's point of order, is what I was saying before. Yep. If you just say point of order, if you think something's not right, I'll help you out. If you are unable to come up to the mic, please let us know, and we will get a mic to you somehow. Thank you very much, Mr. King. All right, we're still on Article Six. Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of Article Six, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Article Six passes unanimously. Article Seven, and you can refer to page 33 in the green book for Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money to the Other Post-Employment Benefits, or OPEB, Liability Trust Fund for fiscal year 2023 or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
I move that the sum of $65,000 be transferred from free cash to be appropriated to the Other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB, Liability Trust Fund for fiscal year 2023.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends.
The finance committee does recommend Article Seven. Also, this one, Article Seven has no effect on the tax rate. Any questions or comments on Article Seven? Sir?
What is it?
Yeah, can you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, I don't want to be a smart guy, but my parry. What is it? I mean, it just, it should be stated somewhere, what it is, to explain to people that don't know what it is.
Thank you.
I've been at town meetings my life, and I don't know what it is.
Mr. Moderator, through you, to the audience, as town manager, I thank the speaker who's asking the question. I want to refer everyone to page 18. I know the moderator was actually referring to the warrant articles, but the explanation articles are on page 18, and under that, you'll see an explanation. That's something that we definitely take pride in in trying to give you concise, cogent answers. So, the Other Post-Employment Benefits Fund is something that most every community has to deal with because there are unfunded pension liabilities and potential health insurance liabilities that relate to retired public employees. And so, bond rating agencies and a number of other financial audit groups look at the town's amount that they're putting aside for future unfunded liabilities. So, we developed a policy two years ago to show all of these respective financial institutions that we take this seriously and we have a designated amount towards that liability every year, and $65,000 is towards that. Liability is much larger, but these financial institutions want to see just continued progress. But we already are financing, in terms of our overall liability, over about 9% in relation to what we have to do, and that's a very high number, so we're in good shape. Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Any other questions or comments on Article Seven? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article Seven, please raise your cards. Thank you. Anyone opposed? And Article Seven passes unanimously. Article Eight. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of conducting a full statistical reevaluation to meet the constitutional and statutory requirements, that assessments are at full and fair cash valuation, at least as often as every fifth year. Any vote under this article to take effect upon adoption or act thereon? This is sponsored by the town manager.
I move that the sum of $41,000 be transferred from free cash and appropriated to the purpose of conducting a full statistical reevaluation as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee recommends.
The finance committee does recommend, and once again, this has no effect on the tax rate. Questions or comments on Article Eight? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article Eight, please hold up your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Article Eight passes unanimously. Article Nine. To see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the Ambulance Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Fund and appropriate set amount to the Fire EMS Fiscal Year 2022 Operational Budget. Any vote under this article to take effect forthwith upon adoption or act thereon? This is sponsored by the town manager.
I move that the sum of $14,500 be transferred from the Ambulance Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Fund and be appropriated to the Fire EMS Fiscal Year 2022 Operational Budget. Any vote under this article to take effect forthwith upon its adoption? Sorry, are we on Article Eight or Nine?
Yeah, $14,500 is correct.
Okay, just make, yes, $14,500.
Okay, so it is seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee does recommend.
The finance committee does recommend. Questions or comments on Article Nine? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article Nine, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Article Nine passes unanimously. Article Ten, and you can refer to page 35 for some information on Article Ten, to determine what sums of money the town will raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, fiscal year 2023, or act thereon? This is sponsored by the town manager.
I move that the amounts of money set forth in the Finance Committee Recommendations column of the printed budget located in the Town Meeting Warrant, including the Fiscal Year 2023 Budget Book, provided to you this evening, beginning on page 35, be appropriated for the several purposes therein itemized. Each item marked with an asterisk, being considered a separate appropriation, and to meet said appropriations as follows. Raised through taxation, $42,668,449. Transfer from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation, $790,000. Transfer from WRTA receipts reserved for appropriation, $20,000. Raised through sewer enterprise receipts, $462,051. Raised through water enterprise receipts, $64,729. Transfer from water enterprise retained earnings, $24,500. And further, to transfer $30,000 from the sewer enterprise fund to the general fund to defray sewer indirect costs.
Mr. Chairman, can you just repeat the first line, raised through taxation, the amount, because I think I misheard it. It's not 98. Okay. I had a different figure up here, but it's been updated, so that is correct. Recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee does recommend.
They do recommend, thank you. Now I get the right page. Any questions or comments on Article Ten?
So, there was a motion on the table already?
Yeah, the motion on the table is to... There was a second. There was a second, and then I asked to clarify about raised through taxation. Yeah, there was definitely a second. Yeah, there was definitely a second. So the motion right now is to vote on Article Ten.
We had a motion.
Well, they... You can't make a motion on a motion. Yeah, so you either need to amend the, the motion, or a majority has to vote against it. But it doesn't matter because that's not the motion. Yeah, you can't, if you have a question or a comment, come to the microphone. I ask for questions or comments, go ahead.
Collette Gage, 105 Charlton Street. Why are we doing it like this? This is very hard to understand and very hard to follow. And the print is so small that you can't hardly read it. The lighting is very poor, so I can't even follow this. You used to read everything individually and it was much more easier to understand and know where our money is going. I can't even in this time span read this.
Okay.
And this was not out previous. So how am I supposed to adequately vote and understand where money is going?
All right. Would someone like to?
It should be by individual, like previous, in many years, therefore.
Thank you. While she's going to the mic, you have a question?
Casey Fleming, 59 Cobog Avenue.
I'm, I'm sorry, my, my bad. Let her answer that question.
Hi. We did have this book out online, so it's been out online for about a week. And there is also the comprehensive budget that's been online. I know folks have had a chance to review that. And this is pretty much how town meetings are doing this, moving forward. So that is how we've done this. And I apologize for the small print, there's a lot to put in there. But if you have any specific questions, we're happy to answer them.
I didn't hear the last part, Katie.
Any specific questions, we're happy to answer.
I just feel that this is very unfair because not everybody...
All right, through, through the moderator, please.
I just feel that this is very unfair to a lot of us town employees, town residents, because not everybody has access to the computer and able to review it. And number one, I didn't know it was even online, nor do I have the availability to do that.
Okay, so does anybody have any...
So I feel that I am being shunned and I'm expected to give all this money? For what?
All right, nobody's trying to harm anybody. Does anybody have any specific questions about any of the lines?
I have a point of order.
Yes.
Casey Fleming, 59 Cobog Avenue.
Hi, Casey.
So the motion that was made, so the main motion is the approval of Article Ten.
Correct.
And the main, the subsidiary motion that was made and seconded is to postpone that motion indefinitely.
It's subject to debate?
Thank you.
All right, so I'm told that at this point, it is appropriate to debate whether or not we want to postpone indefinitely. And do we need names for who made the... Yeah, the, the, the people who made the motion and the second for the amendment need to come up and give their name and address for the town clerk, please.
Can I speak, okay.
Timothy Moriarty, 26 Water Street, I was the second.
Thank you. And who made the motion? Oh, sorry, not rushing you, I just didn't see you.
Mark Katie, 571 Main Street.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, so now we're debating whether or not to postpone indefinitely.
How are you doing? Rich Vaca, 24 Burbank Street, Oxford, Massachusetts. I see a lot of wasteful spending in the DPW Department, all right? And I'm going to give you several examples here. I see, uh, DPW Department workers, uh, two workers doing jobs on one person.
I don't mean to cut you off, but the debate right now, the current motion is whether or not to postpone. So if it gets postponed, then what you're saying doesn't matter.
Okay.
So we need to vote through that.
Okay, then I'll talk.
Then I can recognize you again, not your phone.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Robert King, 59 Cobog Avenue. Talking with some residents, I believe that the motivation behind postponing indefinitely is because there's a substantial number of articles for this meeting and several for zoning. Can everyone hear me? Sorry. I believe that the, um, the purpose of this is that some people feel the motion, I'm sorry, the budget is not sufficiently detailed. And then additionally, there's a lot of items on tonight's meeting. If we postpone indefinitely, we can bring another town meeting to do just the budget. And I believe some people believe that, because in the charter, it specifies that the spring meeting is for the budget and the fall meeting is for zoning, that we would do that. And I understand it's not the requirement, but that was kind of the intent, I believe. So, you know, the hope would be that with additional time, if we postpone this indefinitely, people could get a more detailed budget. Since the budget that we have to vote on is kind of, it just doesn't really have a lot of like, you know, we have departmental top lines, but we don't really have, um, you know, even any detail as far as the salaries or the appropriations with regard to that. And when you look on the DLS information that the town generously posted, people should understand that what you vote on today, if it, uh, the level of detail that you see in the budget...
Mr. King, have I spoken too long? Well, yes, but also through the moderator.
Okay, sorry, through the moderator.
I'm not stopping him, I just need to talk to the...
So people should understand that the level of detail in the budget that you vote on is the level of flexibility that you give to the town government. And if you want to be more specific about where money goes, then this would be the intent of this, is to kind of ask the town government to come back with just more specificity.
Thank you. All right, so again, we're still on whether or not we should postpone.
Andrew Triano, 15 Commons Road. As Mrs. Gage was trying to say, this budget doesn't really depict where the money is going. It's very vague. I think the taxpayers need to see where their money is going.
John Yule, 2 Conlon Road, also Chair of the Finance Committee. After eighteen meetings and going through paperclips and scrutinizing and meeting with every department head, and all our meetings are on YouTube, very transparent. We're looking at what we can afford to spend and what we're spending. We, now, on the bottom line, every department was told their bottom line, they have salaries, they have supplies and services, and they have a bottom line. I wish them a lot of luck with inflation and the unknown of FY '23 and '24. They have to move the deck chairs. So if the copy machine contract is a little too high, then maybe they're not going to be able to buy as much paper. Or maybe the Department of Public Works aren't going to be able to sweep as frequently as possible as they have in the past. They have to make the bottom line of each budget work, okay? It's within the tax levy. We went through every line item, that's what we do here at the Finance Committee.
So, so Mr. Yule, so are you proposing to not postpone?
Yes, I am proposing not to postpone because we've done our job as a committee that you pointed us to do. We started in October, right through April. All our meetings have been YouTube'd and are out there. And you all had an opportunity to listen to them, you can still go back and listen to them. Either you want to, you want to legislate the budget on the floor of the town after all the time we put in, well...
I, I think we're beyond...
That's what I'm saying.
What we're...
I think we want to, I think we want to accept, we, we want to kill the, the motion to postpone.
Does anybody else have any thoughts on whether or not to postpone?
Mike Parry, Fort Hill Road. I think what probably a lot of people are thinking, at least I'm thinking this, is, and Jen's aware of how in the past we would just look at each department and say either hold or don't hold and go through it in five minutes. And it just makes it clearer to get through the budget so we know what we're spending and not spending on anything, and then vote on it instead of one big number and then it's over. That's the only reason I think anyone's trying to get through it. And it would be just as fast, maybe five minutes longer to just say a hold a department or don't hold a department.
Yeah, and...
And not, not saying anything against their work.
No, no, no.
We know they've done their work, it's just some of us out here don't know what that is and don't have time to be online or Zoom or whatever or come to the meetings. And this is our opportunity to get that information and ask the question.
Thank you. So just to explain, anybody can still come up and question anything, which is what the holds do. It's just a different way of doing it.
But you can't do it if you can't read it before. You could read it legibly, you can see it. And not everybody, a lot of the elderly, don't even know these lines.
I'm going to, I'm going to stop you for a minute. So if people would like to, like us to go through and read line by line like before, the first thing you have to do is to vote down the motion that's on the floor so we can go back to the budget. And I'm sure that we can go through and read each line. And someone can hold, can yell "hold" if they have a question. And that way, we'll be able to read...
The other thing is, is most, a lot of people do not know that this stuff is online. Nobody works at late at night.
You made your point that not everybody has access to the internet, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, if, if, if I may, um, if you give me some indulgence for a moment, I appreciate it. Two things. I don't take lightly what's put in this booklet. This is more information than this town has ever had in any preceding town meetings. Trust me when I tell you, I know what your warrant articles used to look like. It was just the warrant and you were trying to actually decipher what went with what. So we try to provide as much information as possible. I want to remind everybody also, related to this document that you have in front of you, we have actually received Best Practice Award for our budget presentation from a National Government Finance Officers Association. The first time this town has ever produced a comprehensive, more than 200-page document. Not just last year, but we've expounded on it this year. I want to imbue some confidence in the townspeople that what we have done is no different than any of the surrounding communities. And more so, it relates to us because we do have a bottom line budget that is specified in our charter and bylaws. So our Finance Director is doing this in a way that meets the Division of Local Services' recommendations on how to present a budget so that we're not piecemealing it together so the motion is all in one. That is no different, if you go onto any other town website in the area, that services and salaries are separated out and then they have a bottom line. We're unique in this community, and a lot of people never explain this, that we really truly have a bottom line budget. So I am prepared, if we want to talk about what's in those budgets according to going down the line item, you can do that. But you have to understand, it's a little bit different in the sense that we already have a bottom line budget requirement and that's how we produce the budget. So you are not looking at every specific individual thing because the bottom line of that budget allows every department manager the flexibility, as the Finance Committee Chairman had explained, to be able to run that department as they see and that the individual line items are specifically there to try to help them go through that process. But the bottom line is what actually makes the difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about postponing indefinitely?
Yeah, I think you need Eric Lambert, 73 Brown Road. I think you're looking for someone to kill the motion, to put it on hold indefinitely. Are you looking for that?
I'm not.
Well, I'm put, yeah, I'd like to kill the motion, put it on hold indefinitely and move the motion.
Oh, you, okay.
Make it a motion to move it on. And trust what, what the committee did.
I think what you're trying to say, you're trying to move the question in order to stop the debate? So we can vote on it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so...
And, and trust what the committee did.
Yeah, it was just different wording.
Okay.
So you'd like to move the question, just a second.
Yes, I'd like to move the question.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second? Lots of seconds, all right. Moving the question cuts off all debate. We are not voting on the budget, we are voting on whether or not to postpone the budget indefinitely. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to vote on moving the question first. All those in favor of moving the question, hold up your cards. All right, all those opposed? All right, majority definitely has it. So moving the question cuts off any further debate. So now, we are not voting on the budget, we are voting on whether or not to postpone indefinitely. If you postpone indefinitely, we can't talk about the budget tonight. And if you vote against this, we can vote. And, and we'll do it line by line. All right, everybody understand? So all those who would, who are in favor of postponing indefinitely, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed to postponing indefinitely, please raise your cards. All right, and there are more against, and so that kills that motion. So we're back to Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend my motion.
Please.
I would like to amend my emotion, my motion to include, line by line, Moderator: $1,800. Selectman: $38,650. Town Manager: $484,111. Finance Committee: $101,300. Finance Department: $1,152,754. Legal Services: $125,000. Human Resources and Personnel Board: $198,602. Town Clerk: $235,893. Land Management: $465,607. Memorial Hall: $171,900.
We're on the top of page thirty-seven now.
EMS and Fire: $2,149,686. Emergency Operations Center: $3,889. Animal Control: $86,926. Department of Public Works: $3,524,437.
That was on Department of Public Works, thank you.
Correct. Municipal Utilities: $435,000. Council on Aging: $183,535. Veteran Services: $239,408. Community Center: $290,869. Historical Commission: $1,650.
On the top of page thirty-nine.
Celebrations: $9,500. Debt Financing: $1,398,33. Retirement and Insurance: $7,971,462. Sewer Enterprise: $462,051. Water Enterprise: $89,229. School Department: $19,339,254. Bay Path School: $1,578,32.
It's been moved and seconded. Okay, so we had one person who had a question on... Page 37, towards the bottom, Department of Public Works, $3,524,437. If someone has a question or comment on that, please come to the mic.
Mike Perry, just want to know if this is in the budget, if there's any money in there, if this is the road repair budget, and how much of it is going to go into road repair this year? And secondly, is there any money in there for plans or paperwork, or anything to do with the new DPW barn on that site?
I didn't hear the last part, with the new DPW?
The new DPW headquarters on that site, is there any funds for anything to do with that?
The DPW barn?
Yep.
Yep, I didn't hear what you said, thank you. Mr. Duval?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jared Duval, your Public Works Director, could we just maybe rehash the first part of the question, I think was about money allocated towards roads?
Roads are horrendous.
No, no doubt. We've done presentations at length, I think over the past couple of years, about the state of Oxford's roads, really not unlike many communities in New England, though, really, but the network average is 62 out of 100, like I've told folks before, that's a D minus, so undoubtedly, the roads need some work. The bulk of our roadway repair budget is based on Chapter 90 money, under Article 3 that was voted on, is about half of what we typically allocate. The other gap funding, as we call it, $500,000 to maintain a level network average, typically comes from a capital appropriation for a million dollars annually. So that is the bulk of where the capital investment in the roads comes from. The routine maintenance work and the pothole filling, that sort of thing that you'll see, that is funded out of the operating budget, to an extent. But those lines have essentially stayed level-funded over last year, and if you'll just allow me for a second, I've got the budget here, I just want to look at those lines in particular. So the road maintenance line, there was, there's $80,000 in there, recommended. It's a $5,000 increase over the FY '22 budget. So that will facilitate routine, sort of operational maintenance to the roads. I believe your second question, one of your questions was about design monies, or any monies for the new DPW headquarters. None of that is built into this operating budget, that'll be revisited at a later date, will likely be public forums surrounding that project, as well as votes at town meeting, I'm sure, to appropriate funding.
Thank you, Mr. Duval. Any other questions or comments about the Department of Public Works section of the budget? Sir?
How you doing? Rich Vaca, 24 Burbank Street, Oxford, Massachusetts. I see a lot of wasteful spending in the DPW department, and I may give you a couple of examples here. Two workers being used to do the job of one person. I see this numerous times, I give you numerous examples, you know what I'm saying? Such as, two workers that pick dead flowers off of one flower basket, two workers that change trash out of one bucket, right? A lot of times, they don't even change trash.
Right, so I have to ask you, so how does that affect the budget?
It affects the budget because you're having twice as many workers do the job of one worker, so you need double the workers. That's how it affects the budget. Also, the work schedule, and the way it's written. If something is not on the work order, right, and they are there to do something, and they see another problem that's related to it, they can't do it, right? And I'll give you an example of it. Recently, down on Hall Street, a tire was in the water, right? Nearby this tire, there was a dumped TV set. Now, it was, the dumped TV set was not on the work order, so that means they could not pick it up. So that means they had to make a second trip down there to pick up a TV set.
All right.
That is wasteful.
Let's ask...
Let me get one more thing, one more thing, and I'll be in it, okay? Also, two I see, right? Down at the Woodland Drive Dam, there is over $50,000 for the taxpayer recyclable construction waste, right? That money should be, those materials should be recovered, and that money given back to the taxpayers. Not recycling construction waste and wasting taxpayer money, right, is affecting the budget. There are $2,000, there's three rolls of brand-new fencing down at the Woodland Drive Dam, right, that's thrown on the ground like it was nothing, right?
Okay.
That money should be given back to the taxpayers. Those rolls of fencing should be brought into the DPW department.
You've made your point.
That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the Department of Public Works section? All right, then let's call for the vote. All those in favor of the fiscal year 2023 budget, which is... Which is Article 10, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. And the ayes have it, Article 10 passes. Onto Article 11. To determine what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, established by a vote of the 2020 annual town meeting, Article 13, as authorized by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4, as amended, to fund PEG access programming, as well as certain other municipal cable-related expenses for fiscal year 2023 or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
I move that the sum of $150,003 be appropriated from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund for the fiscal year '23 PEG access budget.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends.
Finance committee does recommend. Just so everybody knows, PEG is Public Education and Government Access, and this particular Article 11 has no effect on the tax rate. Questions or comments on Article 11? Hearing none? I call for the... Oh, if you have a que, oh, you can't get up, we need a...
They don't, they don't have a question.
Are you voting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, I thought somebody had a question. All those in favor of Article 11, please hold up your cards. Thank you. Opposed to Article 11, please hold up your cards. And Article 11 passes. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds, or borrow and authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue a note or notes and/or bond or bonds, and appropriate a sum of money for the capital outlay program for fiscal year 2023, including any incidental and related expenses or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager, and you can refer to pages 41 and 42 in your green booklet.
I move that the sum of $1,500,000 be appropriated for DPW roadway, dam, culvert, engineering, repair, restoration, and improvement, and to meet said appropriation as follows: Transfer from unexpected balance of appropriations made by vote taken on Article 17 of the May 5, 2021 annual town meeting for Leicester Street Bridge rehabilitation for $565,000. Also, transfer from free cash, $935,000.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends.
Finance committee does recommend that section of Article 12. Questions or comments? Yeah, you need, you need to come to the microphone and identify yourself, because otherwise it's just people yelling things from the audience. I appreciate it.
Robert King, 59 Quobah, I was the second.
Mark Katie, 571 Main Street, I was the motion.
Can you, can you say the motion, Mark, please?
To postpone indefinitely. The purpose is... Can I speak?
Yep.
So like you read the budget, we used to have the ability to go through and hold the individual line items. That was not going to be the case until the chairman of the Board of Selectmen amended his motion to go line by line. In past meetings, we had the ability to...
Well, we're going through these line by line, there's, there's other items.
You made a motion to appropriate all the money in the capital budget, there was a second, and you were going to move for comment.
There's four motions for Article 12.
All right, everything through the moderator, please. So this, this is not everything, this is just a portion, which is the reason that you're asking to postpone indefinitely, so there's no reason to postpone indefinitely.
So we're going to have four votes on article, on this article?
Am I correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
And there will be a final vote on the article as well, or we're just voting four times?
No, we're going to go section by section, and you can approve it or not approve it, you know, as, as the town's legislature.
Okay, so we can hold these items?
No, you would just come up and vote against them, you know, say why you're, why you're against them, and then it would not pass if people don't want it.
Okay. Because in the past, we, last year, we voted the whole capital budget, and it was not broken down, item by item.
Yep.
Okay.
Are you withdrawing your motion, because there's a motion and a second?
I withdraw the motion.
Thank you very much. Okay, so any other questions about this section? Well, we haven't, we haven't had any debate, so, so that's, that's an easy one. All right, all those in favor of this section of Article 12, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed to this section of Article 12? And I don't see any, so this section passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $1,406,432 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the following items, each item being considered a separate appropriation. Building Improvement Fund, $900,000. DPW Fleet Repair Replace, $150,000. DPW Field Irrigation, $100,000. DPW Americans with Disabilities Act, Improvement at Jocelyn Park, $196,802. Townwide Green Communities Local Match, $59,630.
It's been moved and seconded. The recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee recommends.
The finance committee does recommend. Any questions or comments on this section of Article 12?
I have a question, but I have a question, can I just yell it out?
We'll, we'll get a mic, we'll get a mic up to you. This is, this is the mic right here. Hang on, hang on, we're getting a mic up to you. We got mic with a mic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Eva Gibner, oh God, 357 Main Street. I have a question about where the free cash comes from, like where is this free cash? It's probably, everybody probably knows but me, so I just, I just want to know where that is.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McKenna, can you help us?
Yes. Thank you for your question, and I'm sure not everybody knows, we've said it, but I don't think everyone knows, free cash is not free, it's not cash, it's kind of what's left over at the end of the year, particularly in the prior year where we had COVID, there was some spending that didn't happen, so that's not going to be the case, I don't see, in the coming year with inflation and everything as such. So there was extra money left in the budget, and also receipts, some receipts came in higher than expected. Generally, we have a line that is for miscellaneous receipts, receipts we don't expect every year, and those kind of bring that up higher. There's also other things, like articles that you've passed tonight, such as capital. When that's unspent, those balances roll into free cash, and different receivables, so if there are tax, taxes that are unpaid, those receivables can either, they can pull from your free cash, and then the next year, they can increase your free cash. So that's pretty much what free cash is in a nutshell. Thank you.
So just like Rhode Island is not a road or an island, free cash is not free, and it's not cash. I guess is the lesson there. Ma'am?
We'd like a little bit more explanation, what fleet is being replaced by DPW, what is a field irrigation, what is going to be done to Jocelyn Park, and what improvements is supposed to be done to the schools?
Mr. Duval?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So starting with your first question about, I believe it was the fleet repair and replace program, that what that constituted, that $150,000, so it's really one of two potential projects, or maybe a combination of both, is what we're looking to do here, and it revolves around our trucks, number 31, 33, and 60. Trucks 31 and 60 are six-wheel dump trucks, they're model year, both of them model years 2008, so they're 14 years old, getting up there in age with just over 50,000 miles or so on both of those trucks. As is typical, to try to extend the life of our fleet, we're expected to get at minimum 20 years out of these trucks. These are the trucks that are carrying salt, placing salt, plowing snow. I'd hazard a guess that most people's personal vehicles in New England aren't lasting 20-plus years, but these trucks need to, and that means at the 10-year mark, we start planning for body swaps, so the dump bodies that you see on the back of the trucks, sometimes the frame rails as well, they're, they're, you know, there's high exposure and concentrations of salt there, and they begin to corrode. So what we try to do is, and this has been an item that we've tried to have funded for the past few years, while these trucks were close to that 10-year age and not 14-years-old, but that is to swap the bodies out, either with a truck that we've retired, that has a reasonably-conditioned body, or buying a new body for that truck. We'd expect to get at least another 10 years out of that truck, that would coincide with the life end of both the body that we purchased and the truck itself, the cabin chassis, before we retire the whole thing and we put it to auction. So the 31, the body swaps and/or replacements on 31 and 60, it'd be a $30,000 price tag for the body swap, and a new body on one of the trucks would be about $66,000, so it's about $100,000 for that particular project. The second project would be to do a frame rail replacement and body swap on truck number 33, so that's one of our, the largest trucks in our fleet. It's a four-wheel-drive truck that's reserved just for winter use, just for the town's most hilly terrain, the Fort Hill Road area, and that has a truck, I mean, that truck is same condition, it's essentially corroded frame rails, the frame rails themselves are actually sagging on this truck. It's a model year 2000, let me see here, I got it in my notes, I can't seem to find it, it's early 2000s, model year 2006, I believe, so it's got some age on it, but it's only has about 16,000 miles on it as of today, in minimal hours, too, 2,000 hours or so on the engine. So what we'd like to do there is replace the frame rails at a cost of about $50,000, so that would be the one, if we're going to do a combination of these projects, it would be the body swaps on 31 and 60, and it would be the frame rail swap on truck number 33. The body replacement on that truck is going to be another $100,000, so we'd either have to defer that to another fiscal year to try to make that swap, or we tackle just project number two, and we defer the body swaps on the first two six-wheel dump trucks I referenced, which, if we do that, we won't get 10 years out of those trucks, I can tell you that. The bodies on those trucks won't last 10 years, they'll last a few years. And I have to tell you, if anyone's tried to buy a personal vehicle in the current market, there's a whole bunch of issues, right? Supply chain issues, the demand is sky-high, and supply is... sky-high, and supply is, uh, very low. Uh, we're actually taking delivery tomorrow of a 10-wheel dump truck that was approved at last town meeting as part of the lease purchase, um, financing agreements, um, that we ordered immediately after town meeting. So it's taken, that was ordered a year ago, and we're just getting it now. I was told by our rep at MAC, if we were to order that truck today, it would have been additional $60,000, um, on top of what we spent. So what we're trying to do here is invest in the assets, the fleet that we have, to prolong the service life for those vehicles, because I can tell you the replacement costs in the current market, uh, you're looking at for these trucks well over $300,000, or close thereabouts to, to $300,000 for the two six-wheels. For the large four-wheel drive truck, you're looking at a price tag of replacement cost of about $400,000. So it's either invest 150,000 or so in that truck to get at least 10 years, 10 to 15 years additional service life, or invest the, the $100,000 in trucks number 3160 to get another 10 years or so out of those trucks. Uh, I believe your second question was about rural field, well, I call it rural field irrigation. It's really a blanket appropriation for irrigation on town fields. Rural field is kind of where we're focusing our attention on. Um, we're trying to continue investment to make that a bright spot in the community. Uh, we've put a concession stand there in, in the past few years. We're close to now coming out of COVID, actually opening that concession stand for league use, uh, for public use. Uh, we've built a disc golf course that many of you, some of you may have been fortunate enough to try, uh, still in construction, but we're getting a lot of traffic up there for that particular project. So we're trying to create a sense of place in town in general, right? Make Oxford a destination, not a pass-through community. And it starts with not only investment in roads. I know that's a, a hot-button issue, right? But we can't put all our eggs in one basket. Um, so this is a, a, really compared to the 1.5 million that was just voted on for, for roadway infrastructure work, $100,000 is, is not that much, but it'll make a marked improvement to rural fields. It'll ensure that, uh, we reduce our operating costs, um, to, to reestablish fields. In dry years, we've lost the fields because we didn't have sufficient water, and we've had to spend thousands to bring those fields back. Um, there has been this discussion, I recount from Finance Committee meetings about, well, what would the cost of water be for, uh, the irrigation? But it's not a new cost. We, in dry years, we irrigate now with a water cannon, uh, with, uh, the help of the fire department. Um, that goes on, on dry days from sunup to sundown, and it's, it's using a whole lot of water. Looking at bills, water bills for those years, we're talking about maybe $1,000 or so in water to irrigate, to irrigate those fields with the water cannon. Um, I expect with a high-efficiency irrigation system, with, uh, rain sensors, moisture sensors, and a few hour runtimes on the cycles, that we won't be using quite that amount of water. Uh, and the final question I think you had was about the ADA improvements at Jocelyn Park. Uh, so this work includes new, um, ADA, AEB-compliant handrails on the ramp, the bandstand itself, accessible walkways around the bandstand, um, to provide connectivity to, um, proposed handicap parking off of East Main Street. Uh, it also includes a new, um, storage facility in the, in place of the existing dilapidated building that's there now with an ADA-accessible bathroom as well. And, uh, this is really, this is a requirement pursuant to the ADA, really from the early 90s when it was first enacted. Um, the town's obligated to provide equal access to town facilities, and that's not just buildings. That's open spaces, that's parks as well. Um, and again, we're trying to bring, bring people downtown. We're doing that through, um, thoughtful landscaping, beautification efforts, um, the safety improvements along Main Street, and this is, all akin to that, is to make downtown more walkable and a more enjoyable environment, and that's for users of all abilities, not just able-bodied folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVal. Sir, you've been very patient. Thank you. Oh, I think the mic, mic's not on here.
How about now?
There we go. Thank you.
Timothy Moriarty, 26 Water Street. Um, so I have a question about the field irrigation. Um, $100,000, is, is that considering the, the year's use of water for, for the system? Sorry, Jared.
That's the, um, cost for installation of the system, design and installation.
Okay. Um, so we, the residents and the voters have voted down, um, a 15 million, $15 million override and a $5 million override for, for the roads. Why, why are we spending money on things like this when we could be putting, you know, it's $100,000. It's a pretty considerable amount.
Sir, I, I think he answered that in, previously. He, he said that we don't want to put all our eggs in one basket.
Moderator, Mike Lucas, Superintendent of Schools. I just wanted to, uh, answer the nicely questions about the schools of the capital request.
Thank you.
The siding on both Barton and Chafee Elementary Schools, great schools for our children, we're very proud of it. We've invested a lot of money in those buildings. The siding is falling apart on both buildings, and in order to protect those buildings from water entering, um, in different areas, we've had consultants look at it. Uh, it's 20 years old, we need to replace those, and that's why we have that re, request for our capital items. We really need to protect those buildings as assets for the town. So I just wanted to explain that. It's the siding outside both buildings at Chafee and Barton, were both made at approximately the same time. It's the same siding on both buildings that needs to be replaced. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yeah.
Uh, just to answer the, the remaining question, I realize I kind of, um, moved on from, uh, the Building Improvement Fund question, and, uh, Mr. Lucas had spoke to the, the school side projects. The other projects making up, um, the $900,000 is $30,000 for, uh, Fire Headquarters HVAC System Replacement, $275,000 for, uh, Roof Replacement at the Fire Headquarters, $34,000 for Library HVAC Controls Replacement, and, um, a contingency, $93,000 in contingency, given the volatility in the market, supply chain issues, just general uncertainties of what we've seen over the past year, and what we anticipate, uh, in years to come, uh, with this, this fiscal year to come. These values, it's important to note, these values earmarked within the Building Improvement Fund, uh, where their opinions are probable cost, right? In many cases, we work with consultants to get a good budget number, but the true value of the projects is not known until we get into project development, further along in project development, design, um, and, and really hatch out the finer points of the projects.
Thank you.
You might want to stay there. Thank you for the explanations. I have another question. When you replace that building down at Jocelyn, down at the Jocelyn Park, um, outside there is a pot of toilet, um, a handicap one. Does that go when you put the bathrooms in there? And how are we going to protect a bathroom in a building? Is it always going to be accessible, or is it going to be exposed for the kids to, I mean, is, what's going to happen to it? Because, um, in other places, the bathrooms have been destroyed. The only thing that hasn't been destroyed is the pot of toilets. And another question is, is that, um, in regards to money and financing, back a couple of town meetings ago, we approved money for a, um, trash truck. To this day, I have not seen or heard anything about it.
I'm going to, I'm going to rule that that's beyond this, if it was from two years ago.
Where did the money go to?
That's, that has nothing to do with over voting.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Okay. I, all right, I have a motion to, uh, move the question in a second. That cuts off all debate. All those in favor of moving the question and cutting off debate, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed who would like to debate some more? Okay, so, uh, the question is moved. So we go straight to the vote on the present motion. All those in favor, please raise, raise your green cards. Thank you very much. All those opposed, please raise your cards. And that section of Article 12 does pass. Next.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $300,000 be transferred from the ambulance receipts reserve for appropriation fund and appropriated for the replacement of ambulance two.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend the third motion of Article 12. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed? And the third section of Article 12 does pass.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $75,000 be transferred from Sewer Enterprise retained earnings and be appropriated for sewer pump replacement.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
They do recommend. Questions or comments on the final motion of Article 12? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? All right. And that motion passes. That completes Article 12. We're on to Lucky 13, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation providing the positions of patrolman, sergeant, lieutenant, and chief after passage of the act not be subject to the civil service statute as set forth below, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Board of Selectmen approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, which are within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to approve such amendments or act thereon. Okay. Uh, and vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation to amend the town charter, to transfer the authority to appoint the police chief and all sworn members of the police department from the Board of Selectmen to the town manager as set forth below, provided, however, that the General Court may, may clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Board of Selectmen approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, which are within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to approve such amendments or act thereon. Uh, this is sponsored by the town manager and the chief of police.
I move that Article 13 be adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend. Questions or comments on Article 13?
We have a Chief Sad.
Chief Sad would like to make some comments, and then I'll see if anybody else has questions or comments.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Fine? You got officers in the back can hear me? Hopefully. Yes, okay, great. For the past five years, it has been a privilege to be your chief. For the past 39 years, it has been an honor to work for this department and serve this town. I mention that because I have been involved with the hiring and promotion of every police officer currently employed, and many that have since left the department for other jobs or have retired. The hiring of a police officer is a significant undertaking. I'm sure you can imagine the screening process that is required by way of testing, applications, comprehensive background investigations, as well as physical, medical, and psychological exams to meet these obligations. Many department resources are reallocated during this time to meet the financial and time-consuming task. When an officer gives notice that they are leaving, which in general is two to four weeks on average, it takes over a year to replace them. On a rare occasion, we may have, we may be fortunate enough to reach and have an academy-trained officer on the civil service list. In a department our size, if two or more officers within a given year give notice that they are leaving, there can be a burden placed on the operations in the police department, resulting in excessive overtime costs and diminished services. I have witnesses happen many times. The point has come that we need to move quickly and efficiently to hire qualified candidates when a vacancy occurs. Under the current system, a yearly entry-level exam is administered, and we are obligated to hire potential candidates from a short list of individuals who scored at the top of a multiple-choice general question exam. Often, candidates who have tested well may not necessarily be the most desirable candidate for the job. From the results of this exam, we are further restricted to a formula-based hiring process. It is the two times the names requested plus one formula. So as an example, if we want to hire two officers, we must hire from the top five names on the list. If a candidate who is not in the top five position is selected, the person bypassed may appeal the department's decision to civil service, creating a costly and lengthy process. This town has experienced the burden of such appeals. Civil service does not allow for the lateral transfer of trained officers from other departments, but only within other civil service departments. If there is a civil service layoff list, lateral transfers from other departments are blocked. I have seen the number of Oxford candidates on the civil service list drop significantly. It would be fair to say that we called for a list of candidates in the not-too-distant past, we would see 20 to 30 names of Oxford residents. The most recent list called for this past October had just nine Oxford candidates. During the vetting process of those nine, one did not come in the sign, one withdrew from the process, one did not return their application packet, and two had already accepted other jobs. We were left with four candidates who followed through with the process. In the end, three were recommended for hire. A little luck came our way by having an individual on the list who had self-sponsored herself and had full-time police academy. The other two are currently in a police academy in Haverhill, Mass. To further illustrate the timeframe here, in the case of the two offices who are in the academy, we called for the civil service list in October of last year, and we will see them as police trainees in the department this October. We hope they will be successful and complete their academy, field training, and probationary period. As we know, there are no guarantees on this. There have been instances where new recruits have been exposed to the actual job, and they decide it's not for them. And departments that, that happens to, they incur training and salary costs of about $35,000 to $40,000 at that point in time if somebody backs out. Oxford is not the only community facing this recruitment difficulty. As you can guess, there are fewer qualified people willing to step up and police their communities. The reasons are many. The profession is more dangerous than ever. Shift work is tough. The training demands are high. Liability issues are always at the forefront, and the media are often poised to vilify us. I am sure that you could come up with a few of your own why people aren't entering this profession. In January of this past year, the number of people taking the statewide civil service exam was explored. A nonprofit organization known as Live Boston 617 completed the study. They are a public resource for first responders. The results of their investigation confirms what many civil, civil service communities and police chiefs across the state are experiencing. In 2021, 10,345 people took the exam compared to 13,866 who took the exam in 2017. This is a 25% drop. Of the 10,345 people who took the exam, only 6,294, or 61%, passed the test. Live Boston reported that the city of Boston alone saw a decrease of 43% of interested candidates. candidates. I expect these numbers to continue trending in this downward direction as we continue to face two of the most difficult challenges facing police departments today: recruitment and retention of officers. So, what is the answer for Oxford in the future? How do we recruit the best candidates available and quickly before another community hires them? We must take control of our own destiny. Without the constraints of civil service, we can solicit for a candidate when we have an opening and not be beholden to when a statewide exam will be given, often waiting months for the results, whether that be a recruit or a promotion that needs to take place. These changes within our department occur at a moment's notice. Procedurally, hiring and promotional policies have already been drafted should this article pass. Exams for future candidates and promotions will be arranged with competent and certified law enforcement assessment centers with little or no cost to the department. We can offer our own entry-level exam or assessment center when these openings occur. The results of these exams are available within a week and will be timely to the command staff and town manager as these significant decisions are made. Without the constraints of civil service, we will be able to expand the list of candidates interested in working here in Oxford. We can still place an emphasis on hiring locally while at the same time having the ability to explore statewide opportunities and in some instances, seek national interest. In cities across the country, many experienced, highly-qualified officers are leaving their jobs in the hopes of working in a community such as ours. Under the civil service system, we cannot interview these officers. Two local colleges, Fitchburg State and Quinsigamun Community College, are now offering programs that incorporate an accredited police academy coupled with a college degree. Upon graduation, they can be placed into field training immediately. The department's fortunate enough to hire these candidates, have significantly less training costs, as you can imagine. These choice candidates are highly sought after. We cannot interview these officers. Created in 1884, the mass civil service system was established primarily to ensure that public-sector jobs were awarded based on merit rather than political patronage. In March of 1965, the town adopted civil service for its police force. I know that we would all agree that policing has changed in a number of ways over the past 57 years. What was the structure in place prior to 1965 to determine the best candidate for the job? What was the hiring process at the time? I recall stories from offices of the distant past about a time prior to 1965 in Oxford, and many of you may recall, that if the appointing authority simply believed that you were of good moral character, you were handed a badge and told thank you and good luck, and maybe you were provided some minimal training by senior officers. At the time, officers hired were sometimes terminated without cause. Civil Service provided the structure and accountability that was lacking then in many communities. An exam component was an important first step, as well as a form of job protection for the appointed officers. With the advent of policing standards over the many years, such as department policy and procedure, legislative directives, required statewide training incorporating mandatory in-service for officers, police union contracts which incorporate grievance procedures, arbitration, and just cause provisions for the removal of officers, professionalized human resource departments, and mandatory comprehensive background checks, accountability standards for police are more prevalent than ever today. Most recently, through police reform, like all of you have seen in the news, the Massachusetts legislator and governor have enacted a new accountability standard for all police across the Commonwealth. The Commonwealth now has a police commission called POST, which stands for Peace Officers' Standards in Training. POST has established standards on certification criteria for all law enforcement officers across the state. Should an officer face a disciplinary proceeding which results in their firing, their revoked certification status as an officer will now be entered into a national decertified index. Mass Chiefs have been advocates of certification standards for officers well before POST was formed. POST will also be working closely with the Police Training Committee as future courses are implemented. Now, the commission is in its infancy. Once fully established, their Standards Commission will be the final arbiter on police disciplinary matters. It is unsure what role, if any, civil service will play in this regard moving forward. Now, in 2015, under the former town manager, MMA Consulting Group of Plymouth, Mass. was retained by the town of Oxford at a cost of $11,400 to conduct an audit of its human resource functions to identify any issues which may cause the town unnecessary risk or liability. The results of the audit were released in June of 2016. Specific to the police department were the following recommendations. First, the town should consider a charter change to allow the town manager to become the appointing authority for the police department consistent with Section 5-3-9 of the Town Charter. The audit cites the streamlining the hiring process and avoiding the cumbersome requirements of securing applicants during an interview process conducted during an open public meeting. The study also addressed the complexities of interviewing police candidates in an open televised forum in front of the board. Some of the candidate appeals to civil service have originated from the open question-and-answer format whereby questioning of the candidates were not uniform. Their second recommendation was the removal of the police department from civil service. The audit focused on two main principles. Since the police chief has an independent employment contract and all other positions are covered by collective bargaining agreements, the terms and conditions of the department member's employment are governed by these contracts and agreements, thereby eliminating the need for any employment protections by the civil service statute. And they also cite the benefits of hiring methodologies to be used over the current civil service process is the fact that the town will have more control over the actual applicants who are to be considered for appointment. A question is usually asked, who will be affected by this change? Mass General Law, Section 4B Clause E states, "This section shall not have any contractual or civil service rights which have come into existence between the city, town, or municipality and any officer or employee thereof as a result of the original acceptance of any such law or the provision thereof, provided however that such revocation shall apply to the successor or the incumbent officer or employee, which application shall prevent such contractual or civil service right from automatically continuing with respect to such successor officer or employee." Now, with all that legal jargon just said, quite simply, in other words, what it means is officers hired or promoted under the civil service system retain their civil service rights, while newly hired or promoted officers would fall outside of the civil service. The current system of hiring is one that all of us at OPD came in under, giving all of us the opportunity to start this great career, which we all love to do and serve this community. As I look back, I will forever, forever be grateful to it. But I have to assure you that moving forward, it is a system that will not keep pace with our community's needs and the changes that we have all seen in the workforce. It has run its course here in Oxford. As this department approaches 2023 and into 2024, we are facing anywhere from four to five retirements of senior department personnel. In addition, an officer has already given notice that he will be leaving this July. Removing the department from civil service would permit the town to accelerate the hiring and promotions of police officers efficiently, expeditiously, and fairly while maintaining the level of service that you deserve and, quite frankly, that you demand from your police department. Neighboring communities such as Oxbridge, Webster, Charlton, and Grafton have already recognized this fact, and as recently as last night, the towns of Lester and Milbury have left civil service. Of the 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth, 134 are civil service communities. So what this is about for our region is maintaining a level playing field so they can recruit our officers that currently work for us, but we can't recruit theirs because we're still in the civil service system. And as you can see, all the surrounding communities are leaving civil service. As you all know, police officers' actions are constantly under scrutiny, now more than ever. Because we are charged with the protection of life and preserving the peace, officers are entrusted with the ability and authority to take away a citizen's liberty, sometimes using force if necessary. The most important thing we can do is select and train the best possible candidates for the job wherever we can find them. The citizens of Oxford deserve nothing less. With all respect that is due to my brother and sister officers, who I appreciate greatly, I ask for your support on this article, not only as your chief, but also as a resident of this community for more than 30 years, who wants to see this department remain strong and steadfast well into the future. Thank you for your consideration of this article.
Thank you, Chief Sad. That was very informative. We have at least one question or comment?
Megan Triano, 15 Commons Road. With all due respect to the chief, it's been known that I've been a great police supporter over my years in this town. I don't think that we can ignore the fact that it seems that an overwhelming majority of the union is not in favor of this at this time, to the best of my understanding. I don't think that they are saying not ever. I think that they're saying not now. If we do this now, it doesn't allow the union the ability to collectively bargain as a unit for the policies and procedures and protections that they'll need if we move away from civil service. I think that out of respect for the officers that we currently employ, we should absolutely afford them the respect that they deserve, and we should vote no on this tonight so that they can do the proper bargaining and present it to us at a later time, once the union is on board as well. Thank you.
How are you doing? Rich Becker, 24 Burbank Street, Oxford, Massachusetts. I've been in town for 45 years, right? I have much respect for Chief Sad. He is one of the most honorable and most dignified person I have ever met in my life. He inspires me to be a better person. You know what I mean? And I support, right, taking Oxford out of the civil service. But what I don't support, right, is giving the town manager that kind of power, right? I trust Chief Sad. You mean, if Chief Sad was in charge of hiring and firing, yes, right? But with recent events, with the last town manager and what happened, right? Having that kind of power in the town manager's hands, to fire the investigators that were investigating them is too much power for one person. You know what I'm saying? That's all I have to say on that matter.
Thank you.
Timothy Moriarty, 26 Water Street. I just had a kind of a question on it. So there's some pretty strict requirements right now through the civil service. What type of requirements are being put in place for this if it does pass? What are the, is there age requirements? Do we have a detailed list of what the requirements are going to be, or is this just, let's pass it and find out?
This might actually help clear this conception that we actually bargain in advance of making a decision. Civil Service came into this town by the vote of the townspeople, not the vote of the union, and not the vote of the chief that's here, but the vote of the townspeople. And the way that you enter into civil service is the way you have to exit. Hence, there are some towns that never put it as part of a charter provision and were able to easily remove themselves in a different manner, first and foremost. As far as what kinds of policies and procedures, actually, I have a book underneath the desk over there, and I'll put it out on the book on my desk, that Chief Sad, as the chief, has actually put together to help operate the department. The department operates under the jurisdiction of the chief, but he creates those policies in concert with all of his staff. In front of me, I have two policies, one, recruitment and selection of personnel, which is 13 pages, and another one, promotions. This is the way that the chief uses those policies currently. What would happen if we were to be removed from civil service and once it would pass the legislature for the charter change, is that then we would sit down, as a requirement by law, folks, a change to working conditions at that point means that we would sit down with the union to talk about impact bargaining, because now, once it's passed, it's relevant. You can't impact bargain on something that hasn't even passed, not only town meeting, but also the legislature. All of these other towns that have left civil service that have unions understand this. And that is why, even in the town of Milbury, the exit of civil service last evening had no discussion at all, because the presentation that was given, it was understood. I will also say that as manager for this community, I have given great consideration to the needs of the department through the leadership of the chief. We have the highest levels of staffing in the department that have existed in years. We have made sure that we have wonderful collective bargaining sessions. We've passed two contracts successfully while I've been here without incident. And during the COVID pandemic, post that, the remuneration for the police officers in the fire department here were at record levels in comparison to many other communities. I want the community here to understand that as a resident here in this community, I value our public safety officers, so much so that through discussion with the chief, we also extended a memorandum of agreement, very much to what I just explained, which is we can't impact bargain until the decision is made and eventually codified by the state legislature. We're under law, state law, to have to impact bargain once that decision is made. I trust this chief, like some of the other speakers have explained, enough to understand that we'll have those same kinds of policies that will be put in place with the actual police union across the table from us. Somebody who has served with unions and someone who has worked on the table across from human unions, it is about that normal relationship that you have. That is what will happen if we exit from civil service. You don't do one before the other. Thank you.
Thank you, madam.
Can I follow up?
Randy Hamel, 55 Levitt Row. I've been around a little while, and I'd served with your uncle, of course, you know. And I know that he'd been trying to get rid of civil service for a long time and never was able to. I would trust the manager with the approval, with the appointment of police officers, with the recommendation of the police chief, because I don't think, I don't think the manager would ever try to overstep her role here. And the thing is, is that this has been the objective of the charter, the new charter, but this was changed by the Board of Selectmen. And I think they probably made a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hamel.
Joe DePiscopo, Clarence Strive in Oxford. I've been hearing debate about this for many, many years. will actually hire the police department. That's not no longer happening. It's going through a new town manager now.
Joe, to kind of answer your question, I was going to get up anyway. No, with this proposal, if the town does agree to change the charter, it would go that the selectmen would no longer be the appointing authority. That appointing authority would come from your chief. So it would be a combination of the chief interviewing his entire group of people that he said, like he said, goes through all the information. They know what a police officer should be. I don't. I've said that since I've been on this board. It amazes me that we hire and fire, you know? I know nothing about police work, but I'm one of the guys that votes it on. The other thing, by getting rid of selectmen, and it now goes to the chief, is you eliminate the politics. So you get the politics that have been involved. I've seen it in my years on this board. So it's the chief that... It's not the town manager. The chief is going to discuss it with that town manager, but he's the guy. He's the appointing.
I have a lot of respect for the chief, as he knows I do, and I have a lot of respect for our law enforcement and our first responders. And I don't mean... This is... I don't want the town manager to take this as any disrespect to her. What I'm trying to say is, it's sort of like... It sort of rubs me the wrong way to give any town manager, you know, like, again, I'm sorry, Jen, but, I mean, any town manager, any authority to appoint police officers, they could be family members, cousins, close friends. We've seen it happen. We've seen nepotism at the jail before. We've seen all that stuff happen. And I know, but, John, I mean, Mr. Sad may not be here in five years. We'd make another chief we don't know that well and can't trust. We don't know what kind of corruption could happen. I would have loved to hear from some police officers that may be here tonight, if they could speak, you know? I support my police. I've always said that, and they know I do. God knows, I call them plenty of times in my neighborhood. But, you know, my second... My second question was this. I always thought that... I was wondering, why isn't this a ballot question during the election to give... I mean, there's so few people here tonight, and all of us are going to make a decision on something that seems to affect so many.
Yes, you know, because this is the proper...
Right. But could we pass it and put it to a ballot and let people go to polls and vote?
It's just not the way it's done. Yeah. There's no provision to do that.
Okay. I just thought, throw that out there, because, you know, people are asking me. And I'm disappointed in a number of people here tonight, because everybody bitches to me about their taxes, and no one comes to these damn meetings.
Plenty of free seats for anyone that'd like to come.
Good evening. Michael Daniels, 13 Oxbo Road. First, I would like to state that I am a proud union member, and I would caution the residents of this town to receiving any information on behalf of a union that does not come from a union member themselves. All due respect to Megan Triano, but she's not in the police union. So just caution to the residents, be wary of that. The appointing authority to address that with the Board of Selectmen, as Selectman Marsh stated, the Board of Selectmen are in no position to interview police officers. They don't know what it takes for day-to-day operations, what it means to be part of the team, personality traits. That passing this article would allow the strong chief... I work in a department with a strong chief. The interview process starts with the people who are going to be working with the candidates. The policies, I'm not sure if that's how the policies are written right now, but it's so important that the members that are going to be working with these people that are being hired are interviewed by the people working with them. It goes through... There's multiple interview processes. It goes through the leadership, then it goes through the chief. The background investigation that takes place by the police department for these candidates, when it finally comes to the Board of Selectmen, with all due respect to the Board of Selectmen, I am a sitting member, it's really a formal introduction to the town at that point, and the questions that we ask are pretty much a dog and pony show. So we can still do the swearing-in of the police officers, do their formal introduction. The police chief will do the interviews and make the recommendation that this is the candidate that we want. The ability to expedite bringing in new police officers to this town is so important, and the civil service just slows that down. The other thing that I wanted to mention, the gentleman that was just up here was talking about, you know, family members, you know, what if a police chief is interviewing a family member and stuff like that? We have professionals working for this town. I don't see that being an issue. However, politics and personnel, that is a huge issue. Bringing the police department onboard with every other department in this town that is appointed by the town manager is super important. There have been numerous times in recent history, through hiring and promotions, where the Board of Selectmen personal relationships with candidates coming before the board has altered the results. We need to take the politics out of the personnel matters and bring the police department up to the same level as every other department in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Daniels. Who haven't we not... Who have we not heard from yet? Do you want to speak next?
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, you are looking at the original number-one person who fit what Chief Sad spoke of. I became a policeman in 1964, and I was appointed. Why? I was in the National Guard, and I was an expert rifleman, and I was asked if I wanted to be a policeman. And I said yes. And I was very instrumental and worked hard to get civil service. And civil service at that time was excellent. It took away me worrying about being appointed again on a yearly basis by the Board of Selectmen. I went through the ranks of civil service and attained the rank of lieutenant. And I appreciate civil service, but I say to my brothers and sisters, you will not lose anything by doing away with civil service. It will help you as individuals in the town, it will help the town. You will be able to get the most qualified police officers. When I started to work, I got $67.50 a week. If you work overtime, you probably get $67.50 an hour. So things have changed. We must change our status as an... and become a non-civil service so we can go out and get the best employees. Disasters do happen, and God forbid any of our police officers become disabled, or a catastrophic situation takes place. It may take up to two years for you to replace them. You, as citizens in the city, in the town of Oxford, will be the ones who suffer if the car doesn't get there quick enough. I support this 100%. And the younger police officers, you are not going to be hurt in any way, shape, manner, or form. If you do your job, you're never going to be fired. If you are a poor officer and you violate the rules and regulations, just like in any job, whether it be the DPW or any job, you will be terminated. You will be protected, and I support this 100%. Thank you.
Could you share your name and address for the people who don't know?
I'm sorry. My name is Ronald Gagnar. I must have... I must have probably locked up his father. 150 Southbridge Road in North Oxford, and I'm kind of a neophyte to Oxford. I became here in 1954.
Well, can we thank you for your service?
Thank you.
Gary Watson, 7 Wayne Ave. I'm looking at this town warrant, and I'd like to commend the chief. He put a very good presentation. But kind of from what he said and the way I'm reading it according to the warrant, the chief would pick from his list of candidates his recommendation. The final authority would fall to the town manager. That's putting a lot of power... Am I correct? You're shaking your head, sir. Am I correct?
The town council is agreeing with you.
Okay. That's where I wanted to be. Okay. That's putting a lot of power in one person's hands. And you don't know what anybody is going to do, who is going to be our next town manager. I know from reading the Webster Times, their town manager has already applied and did not get the job in Webster. Who knows how long she's going to be here? What are we going to do next time? Thank you.
Norman Mercier, 99 Lovett Road. I call for the question.
Are you moving the... Moving the question?
Yes, sir.
Moving the question. Second? I heard a second. All those in favor of moving the question, please raise your cards. Thank you. Anyone opposed? We have a few opposed, but the ayes have it, so Article 13 has been moved, so we're going to vote. All those in favor of Article 13, please hold up your cards. Thank you very much. All those opposed, please hold up your cards. I believe that the ayes have it, but it's close, and the lighting isn't the best in here, so we are going to do a count, please. And while we get the counters, first of all, if... While we're doing this, you've been sitting for a long time. If anyone would like to stand and stretch, please do. Okay? I have some notes about taking a standing count. If everyone could pay attention, please? If I could have your attention, please? Thank you. Number one, only those standing and holding their vote cards will be counted during the standing count. Number two, workers checking in voters will be invited to come into the hall to vote. Number three, while voting is underway, no one can enter or leave the hall. Number four, only people standing in front of their seats will be counted. Number five, anyone standing in the aisle or at the back of the hall will not be counted. So if you intend to be counted, kindly step into one of the seats in one of the rows. Number six, voters onstage must stand at the table for their vote to be counted. Number seven, persons in the non-resident area will not be counted and should remain seated during the votes. And number eight, voters should remain standing until the moderator asks them to be seated, so we can make sure we get everybody counted. All right? So that's the ground rules on how we're going to do the standing vote. Are we ready to go? I'm getting a thumbs up. Okay. So again, if you're going to vote, make sure you're in one of the seats and not against the back wall. And if you're in the non-voter section, please stay seated during both votes. So I'm going to call for anyone who is in favor of Article 13 to please stand, and please, you don't have to hold it way up, but at least have it so the counters can see. Please be seated. Thank you so much. And now, all those opposed to Article 13, please stand and show your green card. Michelle, is it okay for people to sit?
Yes.
Yes, please be seated. Okay, we have our results for Article 13. Voting in favor, 82 votes. Voting opposed, 70 votes. So Article 13 passes. Thank you very much. No, it's not. No, it's just a majority on Article 13.
Point of order. Casey Fleming, 59 Kobog Avenue. I believe this is an amendment to the charter, Article 13. Is that right?
I'm going to let Town Council answer that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. This article called for the filing of special legislation. It's a petition to the General Court. Obviously, if it's approved by the General Court, it will amend the charter, but it is a petition to the General Court, which is a simple majority requirement.
This is an amendment to the charter that requires a two-thirds vote.
No, you're incorrect, sir. This article calls for a petition to the General Court. You may want to read the article.
Well, I know what it says, but that is one of the methods of amending the charter.
Yes.
Charter amendments always require a two-thirds vote.
Absolutely not correct, sir. You are absolutely incorrect. You're wrong.
Thank you very much. We are on Article 14 to see if the town will vote to amend the Oxford zoning bylaw, Chapter 23, Marijuana Overlay District, Section 1.0, by deleting the struck-through text and inserting the bold underlying text as set forth below for the purpose of expanding the boundaries of the marijuana overlay district and to amend the official zoning map of the town of Oxford accordingly. And I'm going to skip through reading 1.0 or Act Thereon. And this is sponsored by the Planning Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 14 be adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. The recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee does recommend Article 14. Recommendation of the Planning Board?
The Planning Board recommends.
Planning Board does recommend. And this particular article does require a two-thirds vote. Are there any questions or comments on Article 14? Go right ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. Tony Sousa, Director of Planning and Economic Development. It is a pleasure, honored to be here with you all. This amendment would simply extend the MOD, the Marijuana Overlay District, by adding five parcels along Route 20 from the corner of 20 and Route 56. Currently, we're looking at 40 parcels under the current MOD, simply adding five parcels, approximately four and a half acres, as shown here. In addition, if we may go to the next slide. Thank you. We are simply better aligning the southern portion of the Route 20 line by 50 feet to better define the previous border. This 50-foot extension would include and encapsulate all of the industrial properties within Pioneer Drive. It's important to note that all other provisions remain. The special permit process, the public hearing, the host commune agreement, all the other language within the MOD remains. Firmly believe that this minor extension would better help us focus and target redevelopment consistent with the original MOD. I'd like to talk a little bit with respect to impact fees. Last year, FY '21, the town received over $360,000 in impact fees. And that's from two establishments, a processing facility and also a retail establishment. And I'd also like to reiterate that with respect to retail, this question has come up. The town is capped to two retail establishments, and this would not change that number at all. We're simply extending the Marijuana Overlay District. Do firmly believe that this extension, again, is aligned with the intent of the original MOD. It's consistent with the master plan. And I will note that this is a resubmission from last year, and it too is also consistent with Chapter 48, which is the State Zoning Act, which we are to follow as Planning Board, and consistent with the charter as well. So once again, thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to speak on this article this year.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa. Questions or comments?
Richard Vacca, 24 Burbank Street, Oxford, Massachusetts. You know, this was voted down by the taxpayers of Oxford. Now it's brought back up again against the will of the voters. Okay? Now, these marijuana cultivation facilities say they have no impact on residents. The entire area with their facility in Webster near Price Shoppers, the entire area stinches of marijuana. It's going into Price Shoppers. It's going into Map Free that they have to smell it. It's going all the way to Cutworth Ave, Cutworth Road in Oxford, onto the highway of 395. The stench of marijuana, right? It's even going into, my mother went to Sally's Beauty Parlor in Webster, and the retail marijuana store smell was going into that place. My mother never did drugs in her entire life, never even smelt it, right? Let me describe how I spent my Easter. After I picked up illegally dumped tires, 18-wheeler tires in South Oxford, which I picked about 4,000 of them so far in 15 years in Oxford, I went to go visit this homeless guy in the mountains of Oxford. Kid I went to school with.
Sir, we're getting a little bit out of the...
Yeah. Well, give me a little breathing space here. All right? Well, this homeless guy that I smoked marijuana with back in the 1980s got into heroin, right? Now he's living in a tent.
We're getting way off.
You mean? Well...
Could you speak about...
All right. Let's speak about the money then. We'll speak about this $300,000. You look around town. Do you see any $300,000 worth of improvements in town? The town looks like a dump. You understand?
Sir, you're out of order. You're out of order.
We don't even know where this $300,000 is.
Have a seat. You're out of order. I warned at the very beginning that that behavior is not acceptable.
Mr. Moderator.
Slakman Daniels?
Michael Daniels, 13 Oxbow Road. I just want to speak on behalf of this and in support of this. As Director Sousa had mentioned, over $300,000 brought into the town from just two establishments. We have other companies right now that are looking into the town. That's just the impact fee. We also see 3% of their taxable income coming back to, sorry, yeah, their taxed items coming back to this town as well. So there's additional money on top of that. I know there's concern that marijuana is a gateway drug. Gateway drug. There have been numerous studies across the United States in states that have already legalized marijuana, and that is just not true. Yes, America does have an opioid epidemic. Marijuana is not an opiate. There are plenty of people across the board that are going in from your, you know, your standard young adolescent, 21 and over residents that, or customers that will go in to get their high. But there are plenty of people out there from, anywhere from, you know, your grandmother likes to garden all day through corporate industry that look to marijuana products, THC products, whether it's edibles, smokeless marijuana, cannabis, for the purpose of relieving everyday anxiety, for the purpose of just getting through their days. Maybe they have an illness or a disease that they're looking to get over. Oxford would be providing that opportunity for our region, along with benefiting from the additional income coming to our town. The areas that we're looking to extend the overlay, they're already zoned for that area. We're just trying to do a little housekeeping in regards to the overlay. The town, you know, we want this additional money. The town screams for money to better the beautiful town that we already have. And this is an opportunity for Oxford.
I'm going to allow one more person to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Seeing I had a hard time getting down here. Everybody knows my opinion. I was against marijuana being legal anyway. I suffer from chronic pain, and I've got family members that have a marijuana card that need it. I just don't do drugs. However, with that said, it was mentioned that we get, what, $300,000 a year? How much?
It'll be a million.
What are we getting now?
$300,000.
Okay. Through the moderator, just so people can hear.
Okay.
The figure that you're saying...
If this was to pass...
You want the mic, Bill?
Why don't you use the mic? Mr. Yul, thank you.
If this was to pass, there's a potential of over $1 million in addition to the 360 that we found. Talking about free cash, we were anticipating about $150,000 on the units we have. We were pleasantly surprised. We underbudgeted because it was 360,000. That's where some of the free cash comes from. The opportunity here is to generate another $1 million. Now, whether you put it towards roads, or you do some other things with it, fine. If you don't want it, fine. If you find you'd rather fund roads through your levy, then that's fine. But this is a $1 million potential with host agreements.
Thank you. All right.
Well, thank you. That was my next question. How much money would this potentially bring into the town to help the taxpayers? Now, we had that $360,000 that we get. I mean, we do need a tax break. We're living in really tough times right now, and I could barely afford my taxes. So...
Thank you for your comments. All right. I don't see any other people up here with questions or comments, so we're going to move to the vote on Article 14. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Raise them high. No, pun intended. All right. Thank you very much. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Okay. Thank you very much. Article 14 does pass, and I do declare a two-thirds vote. Thank you very much. Article 15. To see if the town will vote to amend the official zoning map of the town of Oxford to include the general business district, land currently in the R3 residential district, all land between the center line of Route 20, also known as the Southridge Road, along the southern portion of the roadway between the French River and Turner Road by a distance of 75 feet, as depicted on the plan placed on file in the office of the town clerk or Act Thereon. And I believe we have a visual behind me. This is sponsored by the Planning Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 15 be adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board.
The Finance Committee is deferring any decision to the Planning Board. And the recommendation of the Planning Board?
The Planning Board recommends.
The Planning Board recommends Article 15, and this also takes a two-thirds vote. Are there any questions or comments on Article 15, sir?
Richard Vacca, 24 Burbank Street, Oxford, Massachusetts. I spoke on this matter with the Planning Board. What we're talking about here, right, we're talking about wiping out a historic forest, right, from Route 56 to Lower Dock Brook and Auburn, right? This is millions of trees, right, and displacing millions of animals, right, to bring in industry, to bring in 320 houses. The town manager has not shown us a map, right, of what this area is going to look like afterwards, right?
How would you show a map of something that hasn't happened?
I'm sure they have a map of what this area looks like. They would not rip it apart without having a map, okay?
All right. I'm going to ask Mr. Sousa to try to help you with your question.
I don't need any help with my question. I'm stating fact. You're ripping apart a forest, returning Oxford into...
I'm looking at this, and I don't see a forest, so I don't know. The facts are, yeah, just state your point and...
I did state my point.
Okay. Have a seat. Thank you. Mr. Sousa?
Just to clarify, Article 15, this amendment would simply extend the general business district by 75 feet into the R3 zoning district, as you see on the map above. And it runs along the southern portion of Route 20 from the French River Bridge to Turner Road. Thereby, the lots would be split, zoned, giving those homeowners more opportunities to redevelop their land if they wish to do so. And being split zoned, it would require a special permit through the Planning Board and a due process. Simply, the change is consistent with the 2017 master plan to generate more business opportunities along the Route 20 corridor. And at the April 25, 2022 meeting, as noted, the Planning Board recommended favorable action. That's all that I have.
Thank you. Slakman Labang, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to clarify something about the previous speaker. He's talking about a piece of land that has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight. He's talking about a project across the street, which is Eastland Partners, which is 320 condos and commercial development. The piece of land we're talking about is across the street on Route 20. It's zoned residential right now. In that area of North Oxford, we are looking at, over the next 10 years, a $350 million investment in our town. If you take the project with the road, which is about $40 million between Route 56, between Eastland Partners, the combination of commercial and residential, you're looking at about $350 million. We are talking about rezoning a land across the street, across from Thayer Pond. It's about 16 acres. One of the owners in that property came to us and wanted to rezone it from residential to commercial. Okay? So I want everybody to understand what we're talking about. What was previously said was not the piece of land we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. I don't see any other people coming up for questions or comments, so I'm going to call for the vote on Article 15. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. Thank you very much. All those opposed to Article 15? Article 15 does pass, and I do declare a two-thirds vote. Thank you very much. And on to Article 16, to see if the town will vote to amend the Oxford zoning bylaw. Chapter 2, District Regulations, Section 2.3, Rules for Interpretation of District Boundaries, by deleting Section 2.3.7 in its entirety and inserting in place thereof the new Section 2.3.7, which is, where district boundaries divide any lot, the regulations of the district which comprises, "The largest portion of the lot shall govern the entire lot unless the Planning Board by special permit permits the regulations governing any smaller portion of that lot to apply or Act Thereon." This is sponsored by the Planning Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 16 be adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board.
Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board. Recommendation of the Planning Board?
The Planning Board recommends.
The Planning Board does recommend Article 16. This, again, requires a two-thirds vote. Are there any questions or comments on Article 16? Are there any questions or comments on Article 16? I see movement in the back, so that's why I'm waiting.
Paul Pitco, 21 Vernon Street. I asked the Planning Board, I'm just confused by this, what is the purpose of striking the language of record existing at the time such boundary is adopted? What is the purpose of striking that specific language?
All right, let's find out.
Thank you for the question. I do appreciate it. So this Article 16, simply by striking out the lot of record, what happens is when you have a parcel that is split zoned, and I'll give you some examples, Fort Hill, Lovett Road, you have some R2, R1, your lot's split zoned. At the time when that zoning comes into the lot, the lot of record cannot change if you wish to apply the smaller lot. By process, it requires a special permit through the Planning Board. By striking a lot of record, simply would apply lot, any lot, post a zoning change, post a split, you'd still be able to take advantage of the smaller lot, but still through the same special permit process. So really, what happens is, at a point in time, you could have 20, 30, 40 years go by, and let's say you have a four-acre lot, you wish to sell a portion of it, and both lots are, again, split zoned, because under the current language, because the lot of record has changed, you cannot petition the Planning Board to request that special permit for the smaller district to apply. And this just simply clarifies it, makes it easier, do believe, for homeowners if they wish to proceed in that process through the special permit, as opposed to cutting people out of the process.
Because there are several pieces of land that are dual zoned, some residential, some industrial.
Yes, sir.
Would this incriminate on anyone's rights that if they wanted to develop that and way it's zoned now, would they, they would still have to get a special permit to do so? Or would now they have to get a special permit?
So the larger, the larger zoning district would apply now, and in any situation would apply. If, if you wanted to use the smaller district, then you would petition the Planning Board.
Is that the case now? Or will that be the case once you remove that language?
That is the case now. However, again, that lot of record's really important, because it's that lot of record is what basically freezes you in. So if your lot changes, if you decide to sell a portion, gift a portion to a family member, 10, 20, 30 years go by, that lot of record has changed. So today, if the lot of record has changed, you cannot petition to the Planning Board. In this language, we just clarified, we strike out lot of record, call it lots, and you can still petition the Planning Board. And by special permit, it ensures safeguards, still requires a public process, folks need to be, butters need to be notified and so on. So we do think that this makes it a little easier on folks to engage in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Pitco. Anybody else? Questions or comments? Seeing none, I will call for a vote on Article 16. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you very much. All those opposed to Article 16? I see a few, so Article 16 does pass, and I do declare a two-thirds vote. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to amend the Oxford zoning bylaw to add Chapter 26, large-scale battery energy storage systems in the form set forth below, and further to amend Chapter 6, industrial districts, to add the language in bold italics as set forth below for the purpose of adding the term "large-scale battery energy storage systems" to the use table of the chapter or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 17 be adopted as printed in the warrant.
That's been moved and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board.
Once again, the Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board?
The Planning Board recommends.
The Planning Board does recommend Article 17. Once again, this requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Any questions or comments on Article 17? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Thank you very much. All those opposed to Article 17? Very good, thank you. Article 17 does pass, and I do declare a two-thirds vote. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to amend the Oxford general bylaws, Chapter 43, pond use, by striking the language of Section 4 therein in its entirety and inserting in place thereof the following language.
Mr. Moderator, I move-
So, sorry, or act thereon. This is sponsored by the Conservation Agent.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 18 be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend Article 18. Yep.
Under the bylaw, what is, what, under the bylaw, what, what's the, what is a violation? I'm talking about Sacchara. What, what is it, you're going to, you know, what is the, what would be a violation on Sacchara?
What would be considered a violation on Saccharaqua Pond? Is that your question? Thank you. Ms. Lochner?
Conservation Commission's coming forward.
You can use the mic up here if you'd like.
Thank you, Judy Lochner, Conservation Agent. In the current bylaw for Saccharapa reads, "No person shall operate a boat on Saccharapa Pond, also known as Slater's Pond, which is equipped with an internal combustion motor rated in excess of two horsepower."
Two?
Two. And that's not changing.
That's going to be a problem with some of those people up there. They don't have big boats, and they don't have big motors. They probably have, they have motors that probably more than three. Your ex-town manager has a pontoon boat, and you know, with that, with that pontoon boat, he's going to need, he needs more than a two-horsepower motor to push it.
If you've, if you've seen the town manager, prior town manager, you'd know that, yes.
What's that?
If you've seen the prior town manager, you'd know he probably-
The ex-town manager.
The ex-town manager.
And he, he needs that, that pontoon.
So Dr. Hamer was pointing out to me that she was reading what, what is now. So that's already on the books, what she just said.
I don't think that's ever been enforced on Sacchara.
Mr. Moderator?
Not a two-horsepower. I mean, that's a small, small, that's a trolling motor.
Yeah, that's already on the book, so it, yeah.
Mr. Moderator, to add further clarification to your question, which was a very good question, we're not changing what the townspeople have already voted, which was to restrict on Saccharapa, Carpuncle, and Robinson Pond, the use of, you know, fuel-powered motors. What was not clear in the last two bylaws that were passed to restrict that on those ponds was the enforcement mechanism. So all we're talking about tonight with this article is broadening the actual enforcement to include Conservation Agent, police, and Selectmen, and to offer what that enforcement would be, because there was no clarity to it. So it's a way of helping the Conservation Commission be able to enforce the bylaw that the townspeople have already voted on.
The, the use of boats on Sacchara is very limited. You know, they, they fish locally, and they don't have horrendous motors. I don't know of anyone that does.
Thanks.
And it's, it's never been, it's never been an object of, of going, trying to, trying to get every boat off, off the, off the Sacchara. Sacchara's a big pond.
Thank you.
I was just looking for more clarification of how this handles on all the different ponds, and what is it really doing to those ponds of what is being done now, et cetera, and what is being used now? What is the big change, and more clarification of how it affects all the different ones?
I think that, I think the town manager said it, yeah. Go ahead.
Right, so there's actually no change to any restrictions or use of the ponds? This is just a way for the Conservation Commission, the Police Department, and the Board of Selectmen to actually enforce those bylaws. So there's no change at all to the use of the ponds.
Okay, so use stays the same. Any other questions or comments on Article 18? Hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 18, please raise your cards. Thank you very much. All those opposed to Article 18? Thank you very much. Article 18 passes. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 40U, Section 1 through 18, for the purpose of enabling the town's code enforcement officers to effectively enforce the town's bylaws and state sanitary code, 105 CMR 410, Etsequo? Execuiter is the Latin pronunciation, and to amend the Oxford general bylaws, Chapter 16, Board of Health, by inserting the following new section. Section 8, the town has adopted Chapter 40U of the Massachusetts General Laws to address violations of the town's bylaws and state sanitary code, 105 CMR 410, et cetera, Execuiter. Appeals of the general law, Chapter 40U, ticket shall be heard by the town's municipal hearings officer, notwithstanding any other bylaw or local provision to the contrary. The schedule of fines for any general law, Chapter 40U, ticket issued for the violation of state sanitary code shall be a minimum of $25 and shall not exceed a maximum of $500. All fines may be paid in person or by mailing to the town of Oxford during normal business hours by check or money order listing the address of the violation and the violation number or act thereon. Sponsored by the Building Commissioner.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 19 be adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee does recommend Article 19. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 19, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed to Article 19? Thank you very much. Article 19 does pass. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by repealing Section 7 and 11 of Chapter 2 of the general bylaws. This is a, sponsored by a citizen petition.
Just for the clarity for the citizens, the effects of this, I'm sorry.
We need a motion before you can say anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was discussion.
We don't have a motion or a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was discussion. I apologize.
No, it's okay. Yeah, if someone's going to-
I move to adopt Article 20, as written in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have names?
Sorry about that. So what this does, earlier, Demeters versus Town Meeting Time came up. So Section 7 has to do with, I think it's Section 7, I'm trying to make sure I don't mess this up, but it's to basically remove Town Meeting Time as the guiding document for Town Meeting and just restore it to Demeters as it's stated in the charter, because it's kind of ambiguous, in my view. And we changed it in 2007, and I don't know why we didn't just change it in the charter, why we have it in, the charter is one book, and then in the general bylaws, it's a totally different book.
All right, I'm going to let Town Counsel try to address that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. The town charter actually provides specifically that in Section 2-1-5, all procedural matters, in all procedural matters, the town meeting shall follow the latest revised edition of Demeters Manual of Parliamentary Law and Procedure, except as otherwise provided by general law, this charter, or bylaw. This is consistent with many charter provisions dealing with town meeting that then defer to, to bylaws for governance. So in this case, the default would correctly be Demeters, except as otherwise provided by general law, this charter, or bylaw. And then the town chose to adopt the provision of Section 11 that says, "In all procedural matters, the town meeting shall follow the latest revised edition of Town Meeting Time," a handbook of parliamentary law written and published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association. Now, I know that many people probably are amused, Town Meeting Time kind of sounds like a children's book, but in fact, Town Meeting Time is a broadly recognized manual of parliamentary procedure, specifically written for town meetings primarily in Massachusetts. It includes case law and citations with respect to the law in Massachusetts. It is specific to town meeting. Demeters, and a show of hands, how many of you have read Demeters? We have one. Two, two. Demeters is a very old parliamentary handbook. It is not specific to town meeting. There are some towns that have references to Demeters in old, old versions of charters, but most, most of the town, the vast majority of towns in Massachusetts, if they have a parliamentary handbook, they adhere to Town Meeting Time. Now, must also be recognized that under Chapter 39, Section 15, the determination of rules of order and procedure are governed by the moderator. So in many cases, the moderator, you've heard it done tonight, the moderator actually runs the meeting in terms of parliamentary procedure. In many towns, there is no specific guidebook adopted by the town. And in this case, even, even with these provisions, the moderator ultimately has the call over matters of order unless those orders are appealed by the body, and then it, then it ultimately does come back to the moderator for a decision. But again, the reasoning behind this, and there is no, there is simply no ambiguity. The bylaw governs in this case, the charter specifically recognizes the ability of the town, through Town Meeting, as was done, to, to implement a different parliamentary procedure. So as, as we discussed earlier tonight during discussion, the current parliamentary procedure that guides this, this meeting is Town Meeting Time. There simply is no ambiguity. And again, Town Meeting Time is a well-recognized handbook specific to town meetings. It's not used for anything but town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rich.
Thomas Cummings, 9 Locust Street. What exactly do Section 7 and 11 say?
Well, Mr. Moderator, through you. I think we already, we already read Section 11 that dealt with the parliamentary procedure. Section 7 says, "The order of consideration of articles as printed in the warrant may be changed by a four-fifth vote of Town Meeting." The intent of that language is to protect the order of the articles so that they can only be moved by essentially a supermajority vote that prevents essentially special interest groups from being able to move the, the order of articles as, as presented by the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen, by statute, Chapter 39, Section 10, has governance over the warrant, and the ordering of articles is determined by the Board of- and the ordering of articles is determined by the Board of Selectmen. The articles then are presented to Town Meeting, and Town Meeting would address those articles in order. There's a four-fifths vote requirement so that a group would not be able to manipulate the warrant and change the order of articles. So that is the way the procedure exists right now. But ultimately, Town Meeting can make a determination whether to change that, but that is the section that we're talking about right now, is the ability to change the order of articles.
We have heard from both sides, so please. Okay, thank you. So we have a motion, a second, to move the question on Article 20. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. All right, and the question is moved. So all those in favor of Article 20, which would amend the general bylaws, please hold up your cards. Thank you very much. And all those who oppose Article 20 and want to keep the bylaws the same, please raise your cards. Let's do that one more time. Those in favor? Thank you. Those opposed? The nays have it, and Article 20 does not pass. And Article 21, our last article. Before we do our last article, I just want to say thank you to the 183 citizens who all showed up tonight to do the town's business. We can't do this without you, and we certainly appreciate it. And for our fall meeting, please bring a friend. Article 21. Yes, thank you. The other one. Article 21, "To see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by inserting a new chapter after Chapter 2 and renumbering later chapters accordingly." So this is Chapter 3 of the open meetings, Sections 1, 2, 3, and 4. This is sponsored by Citizen Petition. Yep, come up and identify yourself, please, so we have it for the records.
Timothy Moriarty, 26 Water Street. Can I comment now, or does he have to?
Got a second.
Second, Robert King, 59 Quobog Avenue.
All right. Questions or comments on Article 21?
So I think it's really important that we have public comment. I mean, just as what I'm doing here, I think it's a great opportunity to ask questions and for the public to be informed in all committee meetings and the Board of Selectmen meeting. I think it just provides a greater understanding between the community and Town Hall, and people should have the right to ask these questions. Thank you.
I'd like to point out to all the people here that get frustrated by people taking your whole evening on Town Meeting, that if these issues and these questions are asked all year long at open meetings, there'd be no reason for people to kind of take up your whole night. And so one of the objectives here is to, you know, the Finance Committee did a great job of having one hearing for the capital overlay plan, but no hearings for the operational budget. You know, it would be, in my view, wonderful to get those questions out of the way before Town Meeting, you know, because Town Meeting is kind of fast, we've got to get through a lot of things, and it's just, in my view, it just helps. And then as far as things like remote participation, we did it during the pandemic. Obviously, since the pandemic is over, board members would have to be present. But, you know, we had hybrid hearings, you know, where some members of the public were not present, you know, and others were. And, you know, so I know that we can do this stuff, because we've already done it before, and it clearly wasn't that expensive. We managed to do it then, and it wasn't even noticed in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I was doing really well all night, but I did forget to ask for the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee does not recommend.
The Finance Committee does not recommend Article 21. I'm going to ask the Town Council once again to give us some comments on Article 21.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting. Just a few comments. I think it is important to recognize, first of all, there's a big difference between Town Meeting and the meetings that are being discussed in this bylaw. Town Meeting is not governed by the open meeting law. Town Meeting is governed by a separate statutory process. The meetings of the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, any of the town, the Conservation Commission, any of the town boards are governed specifically by the open meeting law. The open meeting law dictates the posting of meetings and the conduct of the meetings and the attendance by making the meetings accessible to the public. Quick comment, you may have heard the comment about remote participation and hybrid meetings. Those are allowed currently under a specific special legislation that relaxes certain provisions of the open meeting law. Those provisions shall expire on July 15th unless otherwise amended by the legislature. So on July 15th, your hybrid meetings, your hybrid hearings, your remote participation generally will no longer be available. That's only allowed under a specific statutory provision that was enacted because of COVID. Whether that's extended, it has been extended from time to time, we have yet to see. With respect to this specific bylaw, it seeks to have the legislative body impose requirements on the administrative and executive bodies of the town that are specifically, again, governed by the open meeting law. The open meeting law requires that meet public bodies, being, again, the boards and commissions and committees of the town, that they post an agenda 48 hours in advance. The agenda must contain all items reasonably anticipated by the chair to be discussed at the meeting, and the bodies can only deliberate those matters that are on that agenda unless those matters are not reasonably anticipated by the chair. The statute gives specific authority to the chair to determine who gets to speak, and I know that there are folks who may disagree with that, but the statute is very clear that the chair specifically determines who may speak, and therefore, the chair has governance over that meeting. The public does not have a right to speak. The public has a right to attend and observe. That's specifically how the open meeting law works, and that's how the statute is laid out. That statute, again, governs the process by which these boards and bodies operate, notwithstanding even the passage of a bylaw such as this, the open meeting law would govern, and the rights of the chair would remain, again, notwithstanding or despite any provision that would be put in place by a bylaw. The Attorney General would have to review a bylaw such as this, consider whether it conflicts with the open meeting law, and determine whether it can be approved, because, again, this bylaw seeks to impose provisions and requirements that are in excess of what is allowed under the open meeting law. And should it be approved, and I don't know what the Attorney General would do with this, because this is a unique provision, again, the chair would retain the authority that's allowed under the open meeting law. So notwithstanding language in this proposed bylaw, the chair of each of these bodies would be able to determine who has the right to speak, would still have control over the agenda, and would be able to make determinations as to the procedures of those meetings. So again, there are provisions of this bylaw that specifically conflict with or are not consistent with the open meeting law. This bylaw has nothing to do with Town Meeting. The suggestion that if there was open participation at meetings, say, of the Board of Selectmen, that we wouldn't be here all night, we're here all night because this is the business of Town Meeting. Town Meeting proceeds through a warrant. The Board of Selectmen does not vote, the Board of Selectmen votes what to put on the warrant other than what's put on the warrant by petition, but the Board of Selectmen doesn't make the decisions, you make the decisions at Town Meeting on that warrant. And that's why Town Meeting is very different than open meetings of the town boards and bodies and commissions and committees. Thank you.
I meant to ask the Finance Committee, this is the only non-recommended article. Was there a financial reason for that, or can you use the mic, please?
The fact that, as was mentioned, July 15th, the ability to do remote in and the cost thereof of trying to coordinate people calling in remotely to, if we, as chairs of our committees, were to entertain that, there is a cost associated with that, and it looks like possibly, as of July 15th, that's going to be a moot point. So we didn't see the validity of trying to do this, okay? It makes no sense. Again, we have a public meeting, an open meeting, and we did, and there were, one gentleman participated as far as capital requests go. All our meetings were, people were allowed to attend our meetings, and people like Mr. King visited our meetings, okay, for the most part. So there was a lot of openness as to what, the questions that were asked by our committee members, right down to the paperclips, challenging every department head on what they were going to spend, and they had a bottom line and how they were going to do it going forward in these uncertain times.
All right, thank you.
So that's kind of where we are. So the transparency is there as far as how we got to the numbers we got to tonight.
All right, and thank you for sharing how the committee came to that. I don't think we've heard from Selectmen.
Thank you. Cheryl LeBlanc, 11 Foster Street. So that's an awful lot of legal lingo to explain why you can't speak at your own meetings. I don't think that there's anything wrong with this particular item. If the people want to speak and the residents want to speak, they should be afforded the opportunity. I know that there are laws and there are rules in place, and there certainly have been issues with getting certain items on agendas and whatnot, but to be frank with you, if you want something, you want the ability to speak openly at a meeting, as Council mentioned, they can't, we might not be able to respond to it. But at the same point, if you want to be heard, you need to start voting for things like this. Thank you.
Thomas Cummings, 9 Locust Street. I have no problem with being able to speak at a meeting. I do have a problem with a five-day notice or having a meeting. When an emergency comes up, that means we have to wait five days instead of two days to hold the meeting to resolve that issue. I have a meeting with all, meetings have to be recorded. That would mean that the Historical Commission has to find another date for meetings, because who's going to, we have two meetings at the same time, can't, how many people we got recording this stuff? Thank you.
No, you guys moved, I asked to move the question before, and I got denied, so I'd like to speak.
I didn't hear.
Yeah, no, you did. You heard me clearly over there.
Before you speak.
Yes.
I just want to clarify what Mr. Cummings was saying. Presently, the open meeting law currently is 48 hours, and he's just pointing out that if you vote for this, it changes to five days.
Dave Conarchioli, 53, Old Howith Road, Oxford School Committee Chairman. Town Council, respectfully, you talk about all the other boards, yet again, the school department left out. We have meetings, public meetings. Excuse me, I'm speaking. I have a microphone.
I'm the town moderator.
I understand who you are.
You can go through me if you want to speak to them.
Through the moderator to Town Council, who left the school department out. So let me explain to you, we meet, we're a committee. He mentioned every other committee other than the school department.
No, he didn't mention every committee.
Yes, he did. Yes, he did.
Sir?
I would like to speak.
What is your point?
So my point is, we have two public meetings a month. When I became the chairman, not only did I switch where public comment was, I added a second one, because public comment was at the end of a meeting, so we would deliberate, talk, and then people couldn't speak their opinions. So what I did was moved it to the beginning of the meeting and then added it at the end if people wanted to comment again. It's part of our agendas. Every single agenda we put out has public meeting twice on our agenda.
Right, so what you're saying is this is not necessary, because the committee can do it without any vote?
We do it, but I don't understand why all the other committees and boards in this town don't want to allow townspeople the opportunity to speak.
All right, so that's something.
There's no reason it shouldn't be on every agenda on every committee. No reason. We have, we limit it to three minutes. It's going to be on the topic. People are allowed to talk off-topic for three minutes, and then we don't have to respond to it. If it's on topic, we can. So I just, the part about public comment should be approved tonight. Thank you.
Joe Di Pasquale, I just wanted to, before I even speak, it's my understanding that Cheryl's not seeking reelection, so I just want to personally, as a voter taxpayer, I want to thank her for her service as a selectwoman.
Thank you.
I used to attend some of these selectman meetings, and I think it's important that we, the people, we, the people, have a voice, not be called domestic terrorists at some of these meetings, but we need a voice. We need to, we should be able to speak openly at these meetings. And I just, it used to be that way with the Board of Selectmen years ago. I believe Hank Lamoutin, when he was chairman, he made that a statement for the Board of Selectmen. If you had something to say, he would ask you towards the end of the selectmen's meeting, is there any other agenda before this board? Please come forward. And people would get up and speak their mind. I think it's great. I think it's wonderful. It keeps people active. We wonder why this room is empty, because people say to me, they don't care. They're going to do what they want anyway. If we take, we, the people, take control again and have a voice, Mr. Moderator, all I'm saying is, I think it would be great for the town. I think it would be great for the town selectmen, too. They'd have more contact with their people. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. I'm Helen Chatels, 6 Toria Heights Road, Oxford. I just wanted to speak towards the Finance Committee and to all boards. I, too, hope hybrid goes away, but with my understanding, ADA may make it a permanent fixture, and I just wanted to put it on everybody's radar, because it will be financially impactful. It already is for communities who already do it. So I think to say that it's going to be a financial impact, yes, it is, but we have to look forward, and we can't dismiss it. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts. Sir?
Timothy Moriarty. Was I already in? I think at this point, like you had said, Mr. Moderator, that the committees have the authority to do so. Unfortunately, it's been presented multiple times to several different selectmen, including the chair, and it has not been put on any agenda. It has not been talked about, has not had any further discussion. So that's why this petition was brought before Town Meeting, is because it's been shut down everywhere else it's been.
Thank you. Just, I just want to hear from the Finance Committee and then.
Yeah, just, Karina Casey, 5 Old Depot Road. Just to clarify from the Finance Committee perspective, one of the questions that we had was around the language in the proposed amendment and whether or not there would be some potential legal implications with the open meeting law. So that was explained by the Town Council that there would be further review required. Additionally, the process steps in order to accomplish this were not outlined within the language that was given, especially with respect to the financial impact that was mentioned by several parties tonight. So I wanted to provide that clarity around potentially maybe making a movement to amend the language, if that's something that the town would like to do.
All right, so you're suggesting possibly amending it because the, for example, the five days could be a problem?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Are you making? You're not making a motion, okay.
I would like to. I'd like to make an amendment to this, that the five-day notice of a meeting be removed and replaced with two days, and I'd like to see that the requirement for all meetings to be filmed be removed. Other than that, I'd keep everything else like it is.
Mr. Cummings? The town clerk is going to help you put that in writing just to make it official. The Town Clerk is going to help you put that in writing, just to make it official. Oh. I didn't know if you had to write it first. Do we have a second on the, we have a second, okay. I was going to wait till he writes it, but obviously, if there was no second, then we should know now. While we're getting the final motion, is there anyone that would like to speak on the amendment? You can't, because we're in the middle of a motion. Sir, did you want to talk about the amendment?
Yes. Matthew Pearson, 258 Main Street. Just briefly with the amendment, I'd like to say I don't believe that it goes far enough. I believe that the amendment should be written to strike all language that is incompatible with Massachusetts Open Meeting Laws. And I do believe that we should have more open, openness at our meetings and more community discussion at our meetings. I've, myself, have written to the Board of Selectmen about this matter. So I do think it's important, but I do think it's important that we don't structure this in a way that's going to be problematic with the Massachusetts Open Meeting Laws, and we just pass a bylaw that's going to be struck down or heavily modified by the state.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll have to wait for this to go before you can do any amendments.
I'm hoping that this is applicable to the, the amendment, and please stop me if it's not, but the, the five-day requirement in this proposal specifically says if there's an emergency, that it doesn't apply. So I, I think maybe that was a misunderstanding. You know, if there's an emergency, it would still be the two days.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. I'm told that I don't have to wait, because he's explained what it is. He's just making it official in writing. So we can call for a vote on the amendment, whether or not.
It hasn't been seconded yet.
No, it has. We, we asked for a second, yeah. Originally, it wasn't, you're right, but then we, we swung back and covered that. All right, so I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of the amendment. So we're doing one, one and then the other?
Yes.
Well, which one did we get the second on?
One, one motion, everything, everything.
Okay, it's in two sections, but it's.
It's in two, it looks like it here, but I haven't.
Got it, okay. Thank you very much for clarification. Yep. Okay, so, the amendment is, I move to amend the main motion by striking the words "five business days" and change "five days" to "two days." And I move to amend the main motion, remove Section 4 in its entirety. All right, so five days is going to two days, which is what the state law is, and they're removing Section 4 entirely, which is the, open meeting shall be video-recorded.
I move the amendment to be voted on separately.
It, it's, this is what, this is what the motion is, so I, if you want to do something different, you need to vote this down. We're just talking about this amendment, so if you want to do something different than this, you need to vote it down. All right? So all those in favor of the amendment as written, please raise your cards. All right? All those opposed to this amendment, all right, so the nays have it, so this amendment does not pass, and we're back to the main motion.
Move it.
A second.
You had a motion to move it before that.
Yes, somebody already made a motion to move it.
No. We're, we're talking about, someone talked about an amendment. I don't know who it was, so, okay, so if you would like to.
Amy Frack, I'd like to make a motion to amend, striking out Section 3 and 4, leaving 1 and 2 as written.
Okay. Do we have a second for that? We have a second. So this amendment is moved and seconded. Any comments on the amended motion? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of this amendment, which is to include Section 1 and 2 and exclude Section 3 and 4, please hold up your cards. All right. All those opposed to this amendment, please hold up your cards, and the nays have it, so this amendment fails. All right, it's been, it's been moved and seconded. The amendments have been taken care of. It's been moved and seconded. To move the question, all those in favor of moving the question and cutting off debate, please hold up your cards. Thank you very much. All those opposed, pretty much in agreement. All right, so that cuts off all debate on Article 21, so it's back to the original reading. And all those in favor of Article 21, please hold up your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please hold up your cards. Yeah, it's another close one, so we're going to do one more count. Thank you. This only has to pass by 50%. We don't need a two-thirds, but it was pretty close. Again, if anybody would like to stand and stretch for a moment while the counters get ready, you're welcome to do that. Yeah, we have, we're, we're in better shape this time, because we already have all the counters. So all those in favor of Article 21, please stand and hold up your card. You can sit, thank you very much. Okay. All those opposed to Article 21, please stand and show your cards. Are we good? You can be seated, thank you very much. While we're waiting for the tally, a couple of notes. First of all, I want to thank Selectman Daniels. This is the first time that we've been a tag team for town meeting. Good job tonight, thank you so much. And thanks to all of the town employees who make this possible, many hours and much effort goes into all of the meetings, all the printed handbooks that go out, setting up for the meeting, and it's sincerely appreciated. Okay, Article 21. In favor, 56. Opposed, 50. So it was very close. Article 21 passes. Thank you all for attending. I will entertain a motion to dissolve town meeting. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of dissolving town meeting? Opposed? Thank you very much.